Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do it as right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Riska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Koski.
Here.
President.
Mr. Radke.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanis.
Here.
And Mrs. Yerko.
Present.
Thrown off a little up here. We got our monitors on for the first time in like...
Oh!
Or yours.
I love the smile.
Oh, and it's off just like that. I used to like that.
You're here to be on T staff.
Yeah.
Like I said, I was just thrown off a little. Okay, council, we need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Koski.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you very much, Mayor. With the summer season upon us and a lot of home remodeling and repair projects like decks and the construction of sheds and so on, I thought it'd be very helpful to share with the community a new program that we've started that is Ask an Inspector. And I've invited our building official, Frank Bayer, tonight to tell us a little bit about the program so that residents can be more informed about these projects before they get started with them and to make sure they have all their permitting in place and so on. Simply makes the projects go smoother and in the end, it's beneficial for everyone. So if you don't mind, I'd like to call on Mr. Bayer.
Mr. Mayor, council, happy for having you, letting me speak with you today. First question I want to ask, have any of you ever dealt with the building department doing a project around your house?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. When I was a contractor, I found it pretty intimidating just to have to call the local building department trying to get an answer or getting many answers. And I'm sure all of you keep an eye on the residents' Facebook page. You know, do I need a permit for this? Why do I need an inspection? Is it a money grab? All that kind of things. They get all kinds of answers from people. None of them are right. Well, every once in a while, I'll sneak one in. But we wonder, why aren't they just calling the building department? We're happy to ask. And again, we've always been happy to answer questions to people when they call. They come down to the counter. Our staff brainstormed ways to reach out to the community and we came up with Ask an Inspector program. It's a unique program where a citizen can make an appointment, come and sit down with an inspector, and talk over the project they want to do, go through all the requirements. We promoted this through the city's Facebook pages. It's a carousel feature on the city's website. If you're like me and don't know what I'm talking about, carousel feature is on our homepage. It keeps spinning to different items and that. You can see it right on there, Ask the Inspector Program. We also emailed all the managers of the big box stores in Sterling Heights and near Sterling Heights. You know, tell your customers. Problem we've always had is somebody's building a deck, Home Depot gives them a 50-page packet of how to cut each board. That's not what we need. So again, you can make an appointment, come down, sit with an inspector. We got a partially dedicated phone number. The staff answers it within a day. They put it on a clipboard. The inspector calls the homeowner. A lot of times, questions can't get resolved over the phone. We've had, we started this program in about April, beginning of April. We've had over 70 contacts with residents so far and about half of them resulted in face-to-face visits in our office. We actually have one inspector who takes it a little further and he actually will meet you out at your home if you want to talk about an addition, a deck, shed, anything like that. I provided you with a sample copy of one of our packets our clerical staff put together, contains a permit application, explanatory material, some of our online brochures on all the requirements. And again, you come in, you want to talk about building a shed or a garage, you'll leave with that packet. You'll leave with an explanation of what needs to be put on it. And there's actually a couple of pictures for, you need a site plan where you're going to put your project on the house. We've got a sample site plan that you could actually fill in the blank. And we've got a cut sheet, a section of, say, a garage or a shed where you just fill in the different materials you're using. Recently, we reached out to the Chaldean Community Foundation and they're promoting this on their websites, on their Facebook pages, and with the Chaldean Chamber of Commerce. And if there's a language barrier with the homeowner, we'll make an appointment to go meet at the Community Foundation. They'll provide us with a translator. We're also looking to expand this program maybe for new businesses that are coming in because there's some complicated regulations. You want to open a business here? Do you need to meet planning? You need to meet the zoning and the building requirements? We'll be happy to sit down. But we're trying to advertise this. We're welcoming people in.
So we look forward to more residents participating. I really appreciate the building department for creating the program. I think this will be on the cutting edge for others to copy as well. And so, thank you very much, Ms. Bayer. You're welcome. And Mayor, as you may recall, every meeting, we're highlighting a board and commission now, and we've had a number of them that have presented before the city council showcasing the good work that they're doing as volunteers throughout the community. And this evening, we're showcasing the library board and we have a presentation beginning with our library director, Nate Turgen.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor. I'm the city council. Mr. Vanderpool, Mr. Koshubski. I'm here tonight to welcome our library board chair, Chris Freza, who has been on the library board for six years now. He's been a great asset to have as are all of our library board members, and I hope you enjoy his presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of city council, Mr. Vanderpool. My name is Chris Freza. I am chair of the library board. I thought I would talk to you tonight about the Sterling Heights Public Library Board and our activities over the last year. We have a great group of residents on the board that are listed here on the slide. The library's mission is to serve as an information center for our community, offering a wide variety of materials and services for education, entertainment, and enrichment and welcoming in a helpful environment. The library's goals are to seek partnerships within the city and community organizations to promote awareness of library services, to explore opportunities for cooperative initiatives, to provide library materials that meet the needs of our diverse community, to improve access to the internet and other electronic resources for information, lifelong learning, and leisure, to provide an attractive, welcoming, and functional library to the environment, to promote enhanced skills in children through programs, outreach, and collections, and to support library staff as a key component in providing outstanding library service. The library board supports the Sterling Heights Public Library's mission and goals by providing feedback to the director regarding library services and programming, by approving library policies, by making connections with the community on behalf of the library, and by promoting the library in the community. Board members volunteer at Sterling Fest for the Friends of the Library water sale, and also volunteer for special sales at the Friends bookstore. In the library's efforts to garner community support, I would like to highlight the major sources of funding from the community. The Friends of the Library are donating over $30,000 to pay for all the library's programs for the year: maintenance of the aquarium and the youth services area, additional eBooks, and maintenance of the children's garden. The library has also received support from Vibe Credit Union, the Sterling Heights Community Foundation, and the Sterling Heights Kiwanis for the summer reading program, and Meyer and McComb Bike for the new bike lending program. At Piatt, a resident also contributes annually to the Anne-Marie Given International Language Collection. Last year, residents donated over $5,000 for additions to the library's collections through memorial and honor book donations. A major undertaking for this year is the library strategic plan. The library has hired rethinking libraries to guide us through this process. Focus groups have been with the library board and the library director as well as library staff. Residents will be provided with the opportunity to attend focus groups on August 8th, 9th, and 10th, and there will be a survey available in July, both online and in print, to gather input from residents about what they want to see in their library regard to services. There will be a retreat in September and a final report issued in October. We are excited about our new bike lending program that is starting this week. Residents 18 and older can borrow a bike for two hours using their library card. The summer reading program also started this week. With the theme of Oceans of Possibilities, all ages are encouraged to sign up. Thank you for providing me this opportunity to speak with you tonight.
Thank you very much. And Mayor and council, I hope you agree, the work that's going on in the library is really impressive. It is a great department and having volunteers like the library board is just really amazing. It's always uplifting to go down to the library because everyone's always smiling and doing such good work, and they're so helpful. So I enjoy going down there just to soak in the environment. But thank you very much. And I have just one more presentation on my report this evening. Again, with the summer season upon us and hopefully the storm season behind us, but I doubt it, I thought it would be good to have the residents know what DTE is doing in our community to ensure reliability of the electrical grid and network throughout the community. So we have with us this evening Regional Manager for Corporate and Governmental Affairs from DTE, Philip Whitman, and he's going to talk about this and also highlight a particular subdivision off of Utica that's going to see some major work over the ensuing months to correct some problems that those residents have been experiencing.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool, Mayor Taylor, members of council, thanks for inviting us. I also have with me Nick Paglia, my colleague. He's an engineering supervisor from our Northwest Regional Customer Operations Group, just in case any questions arise of a more technical nature, but I'll be talking through. So, thank you. If we could move this. I've got, there we go, I've got it right. So first slide, we've got several slides. We're going to talk through a couple of different layers here. The first is we're going to talk about our summer readiness generally and how the weather affects how we do that. A little bit more further down, we're going to talk about Sterling Heights, some of the investments we've made in Sterling Heights, and how we're going to specifically prepare for the storm season here in this, in your community. And then specifically, we talked to city manager Vanderpool mentioned that we have one specific subdivision that we have a little bit of more information to share about. But as you can see, up there is a chart from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. It shows how extreme weather and storm events have been occurring more frequently and with greater intensity since 1960. You can see there the trend line almost straight up in, and that is average peak wind gusts is what we're talking about there on the trend line through the middle. Since 1960, started down at 10 miles per hour, and now the average is up over 30, you can see, in 2020. So that's a significant increase in the type of severe weather that we've been experiencing here in southeast Michigan. You can see there in the bullets, the MPSC statewide energy assessment reached the same conclusion that extreme weather is occurring more frequently and with greater intensity over the past 60 years. And over the past decade specifically, DTE Electric has experienced 21 catastrophic 1-level storms with an average duration of 3.7 days. And catastrophic level 1 storms for our, from our data, is 5% of our customers are without power statewide. So that, and that, the average duration of those storms is 3.7 days. So that's how long we spend in our restoration efforts. And eight category 2-level storms with an average duration of 5.2 days, those are 10% or greater of our customer base without power at any one given time. So you see there up to 750,000 total customers, and that's not people, obviously, that's just customers equal homes. So you've got to multiply that figure to talk about how large these storms are and how many people are affected by them. And that was, that data's from 2017. And then weather trends are expected to continue, if not get worse over time. And so, 2021 specifically was a singularly tough year for us. We had more storms in 2021 than we've ever experienced, and we're going to get into that in just a little bit. But we're treating 2021, it was an outlier as far as the data is concerned, but we're not treating it as an outlier. We're treating 2021 as what the new normal's going to be. So we're making investments in staffing up our storm readiness team, our emergency preparedness team. We're training people to go out and make wires safe when they fall to the ground and assess damage faster so that we can get people's power back on faster. I'll move on. And if any, please, if there's any questions about any of the material here, please feel free to stop me. In 2021, as I mentioned, we experienced an unprecedented six back-to-back storms, five of which were catastrophic. And as you can see, I want to call everyone's attention to that trend line at the top, the black line. Those are days between storms that we experience. And you can see there in the, for the past, since 2016, usually we have two to three weeks between storm events. Those days are important because at DTE, we have a, we have a principle that we follow when it comes to getting customers back online, and that's restore before repair. So our primary, our primary goal is to get people's power back on as fast as possible. So in order to do that, often we will have temporary solutions to problems we see in the field. So if we have a broken pole, we put a temporary pole back up just to string that wire back up and get people back on with the intent of going back and putting a more permanent solution in place later. And those two to three weeks after storms are key to doing that. So we go back and put in more permanent poles, whatever the situation might be. As you can see, last year, we had five days. And obviously, temporary poles and temporary crossarms, things of that nature, they hold up way less well to extreme weather. So when we only have five days between storms, it makes our efforts significantly more difficult. And it compounds the number of days and time that people are out of power. And so you can see there, that just, the numbers there are breakdown of different types of storm. We have the catastrophic storms, large storms, medium, and small, all based on the number of people out and the number of outage events. So different circuits that are out of power. This is a little bit of a deeper dive. I got to drive this point home, how bad 2021 was from a storm perspective for DTE. You can see there, we have different types. We call them skies at DTE. Blue sky is when the system is normal. So a normal day usually
Like today.
Exactly.
Today. We would consider this to be a blue sky day today, so.
And gray sky is something, and what's the difference between gray versus storm?
So, blue sky would be like a day like today, sunny, a little, maybe a little windy. Gray sky, maybe a little bit of rain, not too bad on the wind. Storm in gray sky would be like what we had maybe a couple of weeks ago, 50 mile per hour, 60 mile per hour gusts, decent amount of rain, that we, where we see our outage numbers, our trouble volume increase, and number of customers, account carrying customers starting to rise. And then at that point, we declare a storm event at that point. And then we basically stop all of our day-to-day work and it is focused primarily on restoration. No new business, no regular construction work. It is all restoration for all of our employees at DTE. So that's the difference between the three particular dates and the categories that you see here. We're a company of categories and acronyms, as you'll probably see here very shortly, so.
Yes, we will get, thank you, Nick. I appreciate it. And so you see there, this is a really good visual, just the sheer volume of storm days you see. Here's the next. This goes from, from late June through August. And there's a, there's a Christmas storm we had in December, or pre-Christmas storm that's not even included on here. But just the amount of blue is, we've never had this many storms in a short period of time before. And you can see there on the side, that's denoting what type of storms each was: medium, small, catastrophic. It's a lot of cat. We call cat, that's catastrophic. This is the, just a brief, this is going to be Electric System 101 for a couple of minutes here. You can see that we've got several different types of power plants that we have. That's where power, we generate the power, and then, most, many people don't know this, but then we sell the power to the Mid-Continent Independent System Operator, who then sells it back to us. It goes through our transmission system to a transmission station and then a subtransmission station, and then it gets to our distribution level substation. And we have the red around there because that's what Nick and his team, that's where all of our investments happen, is when it, from when the power goes to a substation, to those distribution lines, and then to homes, businesses, and industrial spots.
One thing I also want to make sure that everyone here on council is aware, even though that my team of distribution planning engineers are only responsible for the area in the red, it doesn't stop us from actually looking outside of that red box, looking closer towards generation, so our subtransmission system. If we determine that there's a problem on the subtransmission system, we will do whatever we take, whatever it takes to fix it on the subtransmission system. So we are not bounded by one side of our system. If it's a transformer impacting five customers, one customer, we're on it. If it's a subtransmission circuit serving 10,000, we're on it. And if it's anything greater than subtransmission, as Paul was mentioning, our transmission system that's southeastern Michigan, we work very closely with our, with our partners in, at ITC, which is International Transmission Company. They are the owners and operators of the transmission system in southeastern Michigan. So there's a lot of collaboration amongst DTE and ITC, if we get to that point, so. I'll take this next one. So in Sterling Heights, this map is an overview of Sterling Heights in general. There are 14 general-purpose substations that serve the city. Substations do not stop at city borders. So it is very possible that a substation can serve more than one separate, more than one community. So for example, if you look at number eight, Lombard Substation, that substation serves not only Sterling Heights, but also serves the communities of Troy, as well as some to the south of Sterling Heights, Warren as well. So city substations and circuits don't stop at city borders. That's, I want to make that one point clear there. 14 general purpose, those are, those are substations that serve residents, businesses, light industry. You'll notice that there's a couple white spaces in the middle of the map. I think we all know which customers are those. That's Shap, Sterling Heights Assembly, Ford Van Dyke, General Dynamics. They have their own substation. So they pay the dollars for their own industrial substation. So that's why there's big white spaces there in the middle there. But everywhere else around it, between the Mount Van Dyke corridor, is all general purpose residential, commercial, industrial load. And there's 14 of those substations serving a little over 56,000 account member, account carrying customers. So I know Sterling Heights is a little over 100,000 people population-wise. So if you figure it out, maybe multiple customers per, people per home, it kind of works out to about two to three people per home. You do the math, so. So this is a list of all of the substations in Sterling Heights that serve Sterling Heights, at least. So this is just a little description about the types of outages we deal with at DTE. We have sustained outages and momentary. Sustained, by definition, is anything greater than five minutes in duration. These are the ones that actually require linemen to do actual repairs and actual diagnosis, things like that. Ever since the pandemic started, we started working from home. Power is more, is more, we need it there more than ever. We started getting into momentary interruptions. Anything less than five minutes in duration, typically 30, 60 seconds in duration. That is one, some of our bigger complaints nowadays. And I will say that with conviction, is that as someone who works five days at home, I definitely don't want my power out for any period of time, let alone 30 to 60 seconds. So we do track both of those outages, and we do diagnose and troubleshoot both of those types of outages as well. Now, will we keep going? I'll keep going. Yep. So here is a list of the, what we consider to be high-risk circuits. These are the ones that seem to go out more frequently and unfortunately require resolution. Now, when I met with city manager Vanderpool back, I believe it was in October, November, somewhere in that timeframe, we had a, had a set list then. And I'm actually happy to report that the circuits that we talked about then have now fallen off the high-risk list. But now, with a new set of challenges, depending on when outages take place over the last 12 months, we have new challenges and now a new set of circuits to tackle. So the one thing I do want to point out to council this evening, as well as the residents here, is that a trouble circuit today might not be a trouble circuit six months from now. It might be considered high-risk, but it will eventually, with resolution, work, projects, et cetera, it will eventually fall off. And when we met with Mr. Vanderpool earlier, late last year, we had a different set of circuits, and now those circuits have seen significant improvement that are not even on this high-risk list anymore. So that is, I'm happy to report that. Is there room for improvement? Yes, there is room for improvement. And that is something that we strive for all the time with my team. I have a team of engineers and technicians, and we work hand-in-hand with our linemen as well. So this is just highlighting the high, the high-risk circuits and the type of work that we've done over the last 12 months, and we are starting to see improvements here on these six as well. And it will take a little time for them to kind of fall off what we consider high-risk, since we do a 12-month rolling period outlook. But we do expect some of the work that we have done to help improve reliability for these customers. And then, so, Mr. Vanderpool, for Meadowview subdivision, you had talked, you had inquired about. This subdivision is served from our Bismarck substation, which is located northwest corner of Shaner and Clinton River Road, kind of tucked back in in the ITC corridor with the transmission towers there, highlighted in an orange, as you can see. Meadowview subdivision is in the red, as you can see how far it is from the substation. That's Utica and Plumbrook. That's Utica and Plum Brook. In my analysis, we looked at the last 12 months. At the time, we actually went a little bit further and we determined that there were actually seven outages for impacting just that subdivision alone, seven. Seven sustained outages. The ones in red are one of the common causes that we saw at that subdivision. We, all of our new subdivisions that get built, we actually build them with underground infrastructure. Anything new homes, we require to build underground now. And in this particular case, as to why they saw so many, is because we had an instant, several instances of cable failures, underground cable, underground, failing on several instances. So we are actually working towards replacing it in the next 12 months to address it, as well as addressing the other ones on this list as well, which we would then expect these to be eliminated entirely, so.
So so as you can see there, we under the corrective actions for this specifically, you know, we've got this project to replace these underground cables is currently in engineering, expected to be issued to our design teams mid-June, so within just a couple of weeks here, with construction starting no later than 2023. And then we have additional tree trim and everything that's underground is obviously fed at some point by overhead. So additional tree trim scheduled in 2024 to assist to make sure that there's none of those trees is going to get in the way of that. I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments about investment, because we're talking about planned and scheduled work here. We, there's been, in Sterling Heights specifically, you guys are very, very vibrant economic development here in Sterling Heights. So we have quite a bit of new business investment, including upgraded lines, extending lines for new services. We have the mound road project that's ongoing. You're probably all aware of it. We've got quite a bit of investment going on in in that area. And then also, just wanted to highlight, it's not on, oh, there is Malta. Malta in 2019 had a approximately $10 million upgrade to, it got some new switchgear, significant investment in that substation that's near Lakeside Mall to to harden and make that more, that substation more reliable. So just wanted to highlight some of the investments that the company's been making in Sterling Heights the last couple of years. And we've got, oh, the other, the other, the other point was that about 60 miles per year, the last three years of tree trim within the city of Sterling Heights, that's linear miles along along our lines, 60 miles every year for the last three years or so. So that's, that's, that's also, that's a key point to keeping people in, keep people, keeping residents' power on is making sure those trees are trimmed. That's a, that's a key point with the winds as high as they've been. So with that, that concludes our material. If the if the council has any questions, be happy to answer them.
Counsel, anyone have any questions for the DTE reps?
Mayor, what what I assure you and the council is that we'll continue to collaborate with DT on behalf of our residents and businesses. Whenever we hear problems across the community, we have easy access to DT officials. So we appreciate that collaboration. And I wanted to thank Phil and Nick for being here this evening to share the the good work.
Yeah, and I'll just say that too. So, you know, nobody really thinks about DTE when it's going right 99% of the time, even though we're completely and utterly reliant on you guys to do your job. You're, you have the unenviable position of needing to be right 100% of the time. So we do appreciate that you're here, you're facing us, you're you're addressing our residents directly and being accountable. And we know that you guys don't want to be getting the complaints, just like us up here don't want to be getting the complaints. We want to be doing, providing the best service possible, and I know you guys do too. So give you a lot of credit for being here and and being willing to address us. Thank you for that. And we hope to not need to call you anytime soon. All right?
Hopefully, we hope the same thing.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Counsel, Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And Mayor, just one last thing. At the conclusion of tonight's agenda, I'm requesting that the city council convene a closed session pursuant to Section 8 H of the Open Meetings Act for a council to consult with the city attorney regarding two confidential written legal opinions. And that concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. Next item on our agenda tonight is a presentation. Really excited about this presentation. I see a lot of people in the audience are too. This is to acknowledge and and accept a donation of $32,206 to the city of Sterling Heights for the purpose of funding the purchase of a Harley-Davidson police motorcycle for the police department. We have a presentation from our police chief, Dale Dwojekowski, chief.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, members of council. Mr. Vanderpool, it is a great night. This is probably one of the largest donations we've ever had for the Sterling Heights Police Department. And we are graciously accepting that tonight and be, will be purchasing a brand new Harley-Davidson motorcycle. And up on the screen there, we made sure there were some great photos. That was in our budget book for years and it's all in the name of Sergeant Daryl Brown, retired Sergeant Daryl Brown. And this donation is made possible by his brother Lloyd, who is up here, and Daryl's son Dylan. And a little bit about Daryl. Daryl Brown, a retired 26 year veteran of the Sterling Heights Police Department, was killed on December 21, 2018 after being struck by a motor vehicle while crossing a street in downtown Detroit. The motor vehicle was operated by an intoxicated driver. Sergeant Brown's tragic death was a shock and loss for everyone that knew and loved him. Mr. Lloyd Brown, Daryl's brother, is making a monetary donation to the city of Sterling Heights to fund the purchase of a Harley-Davidson police motorcycle for the use for the police department and the loving memory of his brother, Daryl. A little bit about Daryl, not only did I work with Daryl for a million years, we worked in traffic together forever. Daryl was one of our traffic sergeants. And again, not not just a coworker, but truly a friend of mine. And Captain Hopper is with me tonight. Captain Hopper, her husband, their entire family is really good friends with the Brown family. The entire Brown family is with us tonight. And all I can say about that is Daryl, if anyone knew Daryl, worked with Daryl, he would help you in a heartbeat, show up with a pickup truck, call anytime for any reason. He would be there to take care of problems. That's the kind of guy Daryl was. And that's the love we have for his family. And everyone that knew Daryl and worked with Daryl would say the same thing. A little bit about Daryl's career. He started here in 1991, 22 years old. Daryl went on to have an extraordinary career. Seven letters of citation, 14 commendations, 34 different awards, including the chief's award, 20 resident citizen letters. Daryl worked in our patrol division, he worked in our narcotics division, back to patrol, and then worked in traffic for a big hunk of his career. And with that, I just want to thank the Brown family and everything and Daryl's memory. We're going to have a dedication later on this summer after the motorcycle is purchased and put together. We'll do something on the parking lot. Lloyd was even talking about having a fun ride through the city. We have a bunch of ex-police officers who like to show up at their Harleys, do a little fun ride and kind of unveil the new police motorcycle with Daryl's badge number on there. And we're just so happy that Lloyd is doing this so we can remember Daryl. And with that, I'm going to turn the, well, I have a little award plaque here of appreciation for Lloyd in recognition of your generous donation of a Harley-Davidson police motorcycle and loving memory of your brother, retired Sergeant Daryl Brown, number 43. Thank you so much, Lloyd.
So thank you, Mayor, City Manager, Council, for giving us a few words today. I'd like to also thank the chief for sure. My name's Lloyd Brown, Daryl's, Daryl's brother. He served the city for 26 years. Today, I'd like to recognize several, several of the family members here, including Daryl's wife, Judge Jennifer Fonce. Daryl's daughter Sammy was unable to make it today, his son Dylan, Daryl's brother Joel and Beth, his wife, their son Connor, my wife Kristen, my sons Jason and Justin, along with Megan and Ashley. Also here today, we have some close family friends, retired Captain Frank Moenski. Dino wasn't able to make it, but Rocco is here. Thank you, Rocco. And obviously, Captain Hopper and her husband and their son Brendan. Unable to attend was my daughter, she's a little under the weather today, and and our mother, Kay. As the chief mentioned, December 21 was a pretty rough day for the family. And, you know, he, he, it's my understanding, he arrested a lot of drunk drivers. And it's, you know, kind of an irony there that he was killed by one. He he loved his job. He loved being a police officer. He worked in narcotics. At one point in time, I didn't even recognize him because he fit the part very well. And, you know, he was in the traffic division, which, you know, continued his enthusiasm for motorcycles. I know he participated in the Memorial Day parade, Nights Out, the Woodward Cruise he always talked about and loved. And, you know, he was on one of the department's bikes. And Frank shared a story with me earlier because, you know, Daryl was always looking for a discount or a coupon or a really good deal. That was kind of his trademark. So he he would enter a raffle and buy raffle tickets with this Cement City Harley-Davidson raffle. And sure enough, just about every year, he would win. And it was an opportunity to buy a bike at a discount. So he was super proud of that because he could sell it the following year at a little bit more than what he paid for it because, you know, Harleys were in great demand. We're extremely appreciative of the Sterling Heights Police Department and their continued support of Daryl's family. They've been there for every key milestone and every special event for the family. This blue family is is second to none. Thank you, chief. Thank you, Captain Hopper, and the entire department for all you've done. You know, I'm proud to be in a position to donate a bike. And, you know, it's the latest and greatest. It has some new safety features, I understand. It stops quicker and it handles better. And, you know, I, I'm glad to be able to do it. And, you know, obviously, I'm doing this in my brother's honor. And, you know, there's very few professions that I know of that, you know, when a person leaves their home, there's the possibility they may not return in in service of their community and making people safe and feel protected. So this is our family's way, the the Brown and Fonce family's way of honoring Daryl. And those of you who have served in these times were, you know, quite frankly, the police are not given the respect and gratitude at times that they deserve. So thank you. And Dylan, if you could, if you could further time and thank the police officers for their service.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, here it goes. Okay. Thank you for, thank you for your time. And thank you for all the police and all the cops to be out here, to be, to be out here. I don't know everybody with, all the cops are doing for everybody, but say, and all the sheep, though. I'm also proud of Uncle Lloyd, I'm proud, proud of my dad. And and I do too, because I'm the only man who's in the house, but saying now. I'm also proud of his legacy. But thank you, the police, to, to thank the police for helping everybody out and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Lloyd. You know, I've had the opportunity to get to know you a little bit over the years, even before Daryl's death. And we couldn't have asked for a better police officer. We couldn't have asked for a better ambassador for the city of Sterling Heights. We couldn't have asked for a better man. It was shocking and just devastating, I know, to the entire Sterling Heights community. But you are a a very proud, strong family. And we're happy to have you and continue to honor Daryl's legacy here in Sterling Heights. So I want to thank you on behalf of all the residents of Sterling Heights who for 26 years, he put his life on the line to protect. And what more can you ask for from a public servant? So counsel, I'll open it up if anyone has any comments. Mrs. Sarowski.
Do we want to do the resolution first or do we want to?
Yeah, why don't we do the resolution?
Okay, Mayor Taylor. Resolve to acknowledge and accept the donation of $32,206 to the city of Sterling Heights to fund the purchase of a Harley-Davidson police motorcycle for the police department and to thank Mr. Lloyd Brown for his generosity.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to get through this, I promise. So Jen and the, and the Browns, Lloyd and and your Jason and everybody, your family. Daryl was a good friend of ours. And Jen and the family have been good friends of my husband and mine long before, certainly before this happened. And it was a shock to us. It was, it devastated my husband, it devastated, you know, our family. And it was, it was really hard to hear. It was really, really hard to hear. And Lloyd knows, you know, the guys who go out and it was, it was really hard. And but I am very proud of the way Jen handled it. Strongest, I I don't, I know I couldn't have handled it as well as she did. And how she continued to raise her two children and handled the hardest thing any woman could handle, which which is the death of a husband so tragically. And I wanted to obviously say that to you, Jen, because that was something, still is. And so thank you, Lloyd, for 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 this bike for the rest of the community and to continue to hold your brother's name in such high honor because he was, he was a great guy. And those of you that didn't get a chance to know him, he was just the sweetest man. And as a police officer, you know, how many times can you say such a sweet guy out of a police officer? It's not always, it's not generally something you say, but he was. And he cared about everybody and he made everyone feel special, even, I'm sure even the guys that they arrested, he's kind of like, okay, fine, I'll go with you. Because he was, he was, he cared about them. So this is something that we can hold up in honor and and be able to continue to honor Daryl and his his job and his legacy. Because as 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 Dylan said, this is a legacy. He he gave a legacy and this is to show that police, the job of a police officer is not something to take lightly and it is something to really respect. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Serko.
I too, just want to thank the Brown family. I want you to know that even without the motorcycle, Daryl will always be a part of the Sterling Heights family. He was just that kind of a person. He was unforgettable. And I was grateful for his service, his friendship. So I truly appreciate what you're doing today. But Lloyd, the only question I have for you, did you get the same deal that Daryl would have gotten? But anyway, thank you all, because we do appreciate it.
Counsel, anyone else? If not, once again, thank you on behalf of the entire Sterling Heights community. Daryl will live on forever here. We'll, we miss him. Judge Fonce, we thank you for being here and for sharing him with us while he was here. Dylan, you did a great job. Your dad would be incredibly proud. I know I am. Counsel, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you again, Lloyd. We really appreciate it and God bless the Brown family. All right. Next item on our agenda tonight is to introduce the final amendment to the appropriations ordinance for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. We have a presentation from our finance and budget director, Jennifer Varney. Mrs. Varney, follow that, would you?
Yeah. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vanderpool, Mr. Kaczyuski and members of council. Toward the end of the fiscal year, the Budget Office prepares a final amendment, the appropriations ordinance, to estimate how we expect to finish the fiscal year. So for the fiscal year 2022, general fund revenues are projected to come in $3.6 million or 3.2% higher than originally budgeted. And this chart summarizes the main revenue variances. We are seeing a decrease this year in property tax revenue of about $770,000. And that's primarily related to the companies, if you recall, that didn't file their EMPP paperwork. So they didn't get the the manufacturing property credit that they're used to. And that's been, that's currently in the legislature. So two of those companies, their bills were quite large and they didn't pay them. And since that's personal property tax, that isn't bought by the county like real property. So it's it's uncollected at the moment. But however, there's a bill, Senate bill has passed that's going to allow the companies a one-time chance to file. a one-time chance to file their paperwork retroactively and then the city and the other taxing jurisdictions would be reimbursed for the money. So I'm fully expecting that we're going to recover this revenue. I just think it's highly unlikely we're going to recover it by June 30th. Like I said, that bill has currently passed the Senate. The House has not taken it up yet. I email the MML continually looking for updates. It just doesn't seem like it's, it's moving quickly. But in general, everyone thinks it's going to happen and we will recover these funds. So permit, and on to the next, permit revenue is down a little bit this year. It's coming in a little under budget. The Tier Three Personal Property Tax reimbursement, this we get every year in May. We never know what it is until the, the money shows up. This year it was $3.7 million and as in prior years, we don't use this revenue to fund operations and instead we use it for capital expenditures and due to the volatility of the annual reimbursements and the uncertainty of them. State shared revenue is higher than anticipated again this year and that's because sales taxes revenue is coming in higher. The state revised its estimate upward in January and then again at the May Revenue Estimating Conference. And they're currently estimating this level for the next two fiscal years. Charges for services is down about $345,000 primarily due to less engineering revenue and cross charges from the major local road funds. And fines and forfeitures increased about $230,000 and that's basically in court fines and we are seeing quite an increase in court fines, otherwise known as ticket revenue. And that's due to a renewed emphasis on traffic enforcement. General fund expenditures are about 2.5% greater than budgeted and these include one-time transfers to major roads, capital projects and self-insurance. And those were all funded through the Tier Three Property Tax reimbursement. The fire department is coming in about 2.8% over budget and this is primarily due to overtime. We had unusually a large amount of absences this year, including 2,500 hours related to COVID illnesses, 3,200 hours of family medical leave and 1,600 hours related to injury leave. Now we are going to seek reimbursement from FEMA for the overtime that was caused by COVID illnesses. So hopefully we'll get some reimbursement on that. Fuel costs were also higher than expected due to gas prices. And all of the other departments came in under budget. And one of the main reasons throughout a lot of the departments was just the timing of hiring people. So for example, the seven new police officers, they were budgeted to start January 1st, but we just hired them about a month ago. And that's kind of been the story of the year. It's been taking longer to replace and hire new employees and therefore the departments are coming in under budget. So the bottom line is that for the current fiscal year, we're going to add about $758,000 to fund balance and that's better than we had anticipated. And this will bring our general fund balance percentage to just under 28% of expenditures at the end of the fiscal year. The budget for the other city funds in total increased by $2.6 million and it's primarily due to, first of all, the Ryan Road concrete repairs that were approved by city council on April 19th and those are funded through the American Rescue Plan. In the other road funds, we have additional approved road projects, including haze roads, resurfacing, and also the advanced funding of the 2022 Local Road Reconstruction Program. In capital projects, we had the purch, the purchase of an additional ambulance that was approved by city council in December and the advanced purchase of a fire pumper that was budgeted in 2023 and that purchase was approved by city council in May. Funds that saw, that are coming in lower than expected, also the sidewalk repair program, that's just a delay to fiscal year 2023. We also saw a delay in the sewer televising project until 2023 and a reduction in parks and rec expenditures, again due to timing of hiring and also savings on contracted services and utilities. And finally, the CDBG fund also came in under budget, but that funding will roll forward to next fiscal year. Mr. Mayor, this is the first reading of this ordinance, which is scheduled for adoption at the June 21st city council meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Mrs. Varney, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Arco.
Resolve to introduce the final amendment to the appropriations ordinance for the 2021-22 fiscal year.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Arco?
I think it's been explained very well.
Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mrs. Varney. Next item on our agenda tonight is an ordinance introduction and this is to consider introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 53, Article 1 of the city code to update billing protocols and calculation of capital charges for the water and sewer system. We have another presentation from our Finance and Budget Director, Jennifer Varney. Ms. Varney.
Thank you again. The amendments to the water and sewer ordinance before you include changes to the calculation of capital charges paid by developers as recommended by Raff Tellus as part of the water and sewer rate study that was completed about a year and a half, a year and a half ago. These changes primarily affect developers and represent best practices for a redeveloped community such as Sterling Heights. In almost every case, the new fees will result in reduced costs. The amendment also codifies the change to monthly water billing for all customers that is currently in the implementation process and cleans up language around the number of accounting funds that are used for the water and sewer fund. Tonight is the introduction of this ordinance amendment, which is scheduled to be adopted at the next city council meeting. And the city attorney and I are available for any questions.
Thank you again, Ms. Varney. Any questions from the audience? If not, counsel, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolve to introduce the ordinance amending Chapter 53, Article 1 of the city code to update billing protocols and calculation of capital charges for the water and sewer. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
No, Mayor.
Counsel? With no further discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Sorry. I just had a brief question through the chair to Mrs. Varney. Reading this, the capital fees for the, the new proposed charges are actually rolling back. I guess what was the thinking, essentially the fees are going down. Like I'm looking at new commercial development, used to pay X, now they're going to pay Y. Looking at the material here, which is very dense, because what was Raff Tellus, why did they lower a lot of the fees? I mean, and I guess who's going to make up the difference in the lower fees? Are we putting that on the backs of our residents or I guess where is the discount coming from? Because our water rates have been going up for several years.
Ms. Varney.
So basically the main reason was our current fee structure was more for a developing community. It was originally for developers to buy into the system that already existed and pretty much since we're a develop now, that's, that's basically done. And now that it's a redeveloped community, our current way was, in a way, making developers to buy into a system again when someone had already bought into it, when that, that project was developed originally. And so, and the other thing was basing the charges on the size of the meter, which is a more accurate representation of the, 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 I can't think of the word, on this, how much the development will use the system as opposed to square footage. So they, so they are lower for developers. Now, I've never, we've never included that revenue in our rates. So the capital charge rate, revenue has always been outside of the rate calculation and, you know, increases fund balance and gives us a way to kind of fund some projects without raising rates. So, but in the end, if we have less revenue there.
Right. So I, I guess, to be very clear, I'm wondering why we're rolling back the capital charges for creation of new or redeveloped parcels, if that's going to cost our residents more in the long run. I'm more comfortable with developers paying those fees than our residents. And this proposal seems to me to be a shift where we're going to charge less for development and somehow we're going to have to make that, because if you're cutting one place, revenue will need to be made up someplace else. So that's what I was confused about.
Ms. Varney.
Through the rate study and through our city attorney and the team that worked on this, we, we really believe this is a more equitable way to distribute the fees and it, it's, it's more representative of a redeveloped community. And again, there has to be a, a reason to charge the fees that makes sense. And this calculation recognizes that a redevelopment has less impact on a system than a, than the original development. They already, the original development already paid for the buy into the system and the redevelopment impacts the system to the extent that it has a larger impact on it.
I understand. I just, the word equitable always throws me because when we made water rates more equitable, the people on the lower end ended up paying more, people on the higher end ended up paying less. I see this here too and it makes me suspicious because I think that we're going to charge developers less, we can charge our residents more. And that makes me very fearful. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Radke. Radke, counsel, anyone else? Ms. Varney, there was, in past few years, there was an attorney going around suing cities for water rates. And what they essentially were arguing, if I understand it correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that when cities or townships were charging a portion of their water rates that didn't go directly into providing the service, but were used to set aside for a, like a fund balance, reserve, the rainy day fund. The argument that that attorney made was that it is essentially a tax then, because these, this system has to be, this system can't operate like a tax. It has to be, it has to operate like a service provider would. Now, I personally think that any service provider should build in some wiggle room so that they can maintain the system. But is that essentially what that, with that lawsuit and what those series of lawsuits were about?
So we're allowed to build up fund balance as part of our rate structure and the city attorney can jump in if I am, you know, but I think in my opinion, it has to be reasonable. And in the Shelby Township case, what my understanding of that is, the problem was they included, so, so we recognized depreciation in the financial statements. It's about $6 million a year for Sterling Heights. My understanding is Shelby Township included that as a cost when calculating their rates, which in and of itself is okay because you're, in a sense, you're, you're using that to build up fund balance to then replace the system, but then they also raised rates to build the system. And Mr. Kachubski is nodding, so I think I'm correct. So I mean, that to me was, I believe the problem is they were, they were basically doing it on both ends. They're charging depreciation and then charging for the, for the, the construction. So I, again, we're, I'm trying, we're trying to build up fund balance too because it's, you know, again, for one reason is if you, if you noticed for the current year, the water and sewer fund is going to lose money this year because we had an amazingly wet summer where no one watered their grass. So you've got to have fund balance in there to, to, you know, take those ups and flows. So I think it just has to be a reasonable amount of fund balance and you have to then use it to, to fix pipelines and not charge your residents again.
So maybe it's not an exact apples to apples comparison, but, but what I think I was hearing from you is that the concern is that we can't be charging people, even, it's, it's not, maybe it's not a fair thing for the city, even if it's, even if it does benefit the haves more than the have nots, that we can't just shift the burden arbitrarily to one group or the other. It has to, there has to be an approximation of what the service actually costs in order for us to bill that. Is that, is that a fair way of summarizing it?
Yeah, there has to be a basis for the charge, like any charge. We can't just, you know, charge more money for something because we want to raise more revenue. So there has to be a basis on what they're purchasing and what a capital charge is supposed to represent is buying into the water and sewer system. And so when you develop a property, you're buying into the system, but then when someone comes and redevelops that property, you know, the, the argument is the prior developer already bought into the system. And so you should only be paying for your additional impact on the system, which is best represented by the size of the meter. So if, if your new development is going to have a larger meter, then that's going to have a larger impact on the system than the prior development. And that's what this rate structure represents.
Okay, I'm satisfied. Counsel, anyone else?
One more question, Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead.
Through the chair to Mr. Kachubski, is our current fee structure defensible in court? Are we doing something illegal with our current fee structure?
I would say no, we're not. Our fee structure was set up again for a developing community. Raff Tellus came in and did a weight, a water rate study and said that based on the current status of our community, a rate structure shift needs to be done going forward. It's, it's, it's more about right sizing the amount of the charges for developers. So developer currently would now get a credit for prior purchases and we've, we've done that in the past and now going forward, we're going to do it going forward with this new structure by meter instead of by square footage.
Right. Well, just to reiterate, I'm looking at figure 35. It says new multi-family development. It goes from a $40,000 fee to a $7,900 fee. And that's not a redevelopment, that's a new development. So that, that seems, I guess my point is Sterling Heights is over 50 years old. I'm glad just now we're shifting to redevelopment. It strikes me that as a 50-year-old city, I'm not a 50-year-old person, I'm way past the, the age of that. So I, I just think this new fee structure needs a little bit more fleshing out. I'm glad that Raff Tellus is an expert, but I think it's unfair to the people who've been paying these fees for 50 years to suddenly shift it and now some people are going to be paying less while they'll be paying more. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, anyone else? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is an ordinance introduction and this is to consider introduction of a map amendment to zoning ordinance number 278 to conditionally rezone properties situated on the east side of Shana Road between 14 and 15 mile roads in section 36 from O1 Business and Professional Office District to RM3 Multiple Family Mid and High Rise District, case number PZ22-0002. We have Mr. Philippa Jerry on behalf of Gallo Companies LLC and a presentation by our city planner, Chris McLeod. Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel, Mr. Vanderpool. As you know, Mr. Mayor, before you tonight is the potential introduction for a conditional rezoning application at 33416 Shana Road. This request is from a conditional rezoning from the O1 Business and, Business and Professional Office District to our RM3 Multiple Family Mid and High Rise District. The current user zoning, it's vacant property at this point and again, it's that O1 designation. The applicant is proposing a single apartment building that would have a total of 54 two-bedroom units and 34 one-bedroom units for a total of 88 units at this point. Parking is located on all sides of the building, will essentially three sides, not necessarily along the front, but the proposed height of the apartment building to the midpoint is 35 six or 35 feet six inches. There are some remaining site plan review comments that can be addressed administratively that result from the overall density and landscaping of their proposal as it stands now. And then the applicant has included a recreation area within the setback area towards the back, which includes a playscape and pavilion for residential use. And the applicant has also provided some recreation or open space areas within the parking lot area with enlarged islands and you'll see a rendering of those in just a moment. Here you can kind of see the zoning scheme of this particular area of the city on the side of Shana. Again, C1, O1 on the east side and then multiple family all on the west side of Shana, single family residential to the east behind the subject property. Here you kind of just see an aerial perspective of where the property would sit relative to its surroundings. The office building is medical office to the north and then you have retail along with the bowling alley property further to the south, again, single family residential to the east, multiple family and a, and a large number of multiple family developments to the west side of Shana. Just kind of a Google frontage view, if you will, of how the property would sit. You can see the office building to the left-hand side of the screen, the auto parts store to the right-hand side of the screen in terms of that. The master plan designation does designate this property for local commercial designation. That obviously by its very name intends this to be a That obviously, by its very name, intends this to be a local commercial usage. However, it is to note that the local commercial designation does call for potential additional multiple-family units or residential units on upper stories of commercial buildings, not necessarily multiple-family outright, but it does suggest the introduction of multiple-family in some of these areas. Here, you're seeing the revised plan that Mr. Gallo and his team put together after the planning commission meeting. Mr. Gallo took to heart the comments and the considerations put forward by the planning commission members, and reduced the number of units by four. So, when the planning commission first saw this, or saw this, and made their recommendation, the total units was 92. We're now at 88. He did increase the amount of open space at the right-hand side of the screen, which is the back portion of the property. Has also increased the size of the playscape. Those parking lot islands to the very top of the site development, about midpoint of the development, if you will, and to the south end of the development, those have turned into somewhat of a recreational space within those parking lot island areas themselves. And then, the team has also significantly increased the amount of landscaping from the original proposal. The architectural renderings, generally speaking, have remained the same, provide an attractive architecture, primarily two-thirds of the building or so is brick and burnished block. And then, the top story, the, basically, the third floor intermittently uses a vinyl-sided product, as well as the peaks within the roof system itself. Here, you can see an aerial photo of how this would ultimately sit amongst the existing buildings and its environment. Again, the office building, which is to the north, is to the upper left-hand side of the screen, the retail building to the bottom right-hand side of the screen, the multiple-family in this particular instance across Shana would be to the bottom left-hand side of the screen. And again, you can see the single-family residential to the top right-hand corner. Again, this is kind of looking from the backside of the building towards Shana. Again, the same land uses are surrounding the building itself. This shows one of those parking lot islands as it kind of looks into the building, if you will. I believe this one is on the north side of the building, looking south into the building itself. So, again, you can see how that kind of situates itself amongst the parking area, then ultimately into the building. The ultimate building material scheme here, again, showing the variety of materials, that burnished masonry unit, the bricks, as well as the different vinyl siding and the asphalt roof singles, which would adorn the rooftop itself. So, site plan review comments, again, there's some outstanding comments, maybe outnumber is probably an overstatement. But in terms of, and again, a lot of the revised plan addresses a number of those site planning items. We always, as the team knows, Mr. Gallo's team knows, I always push to try to get additional landscaping, so that comment's always gonna be there. Looking at the master plan zoning land use designation, again, this area is designated for local commercial. As part of the rezoning application, we always ask the question as to why the property can't be developed as currently zoned, as that office designation. But again, noting that the master plan designation does begin to introduce or open that door for residential. And one of the concepts that the city has used in prior areas is using multiple family as a trigger for redevelopment for mixed use and a larger concept, which may be the case in this instance, if you go further to the south, to the corner of 14 and Shana. The existing land use pattern, office and commercial uses to the north and to the south, single-family obviously to the east, multiple-family to the west. Zoning patterns, again, O1 to the north, C1 to the south, one-family to the east, and then multiple-family to the west. As you can see here, these are the variance requests that are being requested as part of the overall development. Again, the conditional rezoning agreement allows for the developer to request these variances as part of their application, as part of the entire package. Planning commission and city council can ultimately determine whether these variances are appropriate. No zoning board of appeals action is necessary. Again, this is part of the overall package itself. So, with that, I'd be more than glad to answer any questions that the city council may have. I do wanna note that, obviously, with any development, you know, multiple-family is an area of the city that we are in need of. You can, the number of times I've been in front of you in the last year or so bringing multiple-family developments, that's obvious. So, it becomes a question of whether this, you know, can be a catalyst for future development in the future, and whether the council feels that this is the appropriate area to locate that. And then, finally, whether or not this particular proposal at this particular density, or at a lesser density, may also help solve that equation. So, with that, again, I'll be more than glad to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. McLeod. Mr. Rogeri, would you like to make a presentation?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. On record, Philper Jerry, here on behalf of the Gallo Companies. I have Tony Gallo here to my right. We have our engineer, Andy Wakelin, and Nathan, he's from an architectural firm. Chris has outlined quite clearly the project that Tony has considered, and as we know, Tony's not a stranger to our community. He's developed the Sterling Landings at 15 and Van Dyke, which is a significant development. It's been a very good asset to our community. Likewise, he's gone ahead with Shana and Hall Road, where the Pier 1 location is, and Hobby Lobby, and that's currently under construction. That's gonna be another beautiful addition here in our community. And as Tony is a very aggressive individual that wants to continue with his apartments, he's building them in several communities. He's got several going on in Chesterfield right now, and he's earmarked other locations and different communities. And his, one thing about Tony, his projects are impeccably clean and built the right way. He's heavy on landscaping. Curb appeal is very important to him. He's very meticulous about all of his projects. If you drive around and check them out, you'll see that they all have the same approach, very systematic, very clean, well-run, well-managed. So, likewise, with this particular project, what I'll do is, I'd just like to hand this out, if you could pass it along. What we've done is highlighted since the planning commission, which is a rather extensive hearing, we had a lot of comments from the planners themselves and the residents, and as a result of that hearing, we had a 3-5 vote that was not in our favor. However, there was a lot of suggestions made as to why they made their decision. So, what Tony and our team had done is taken every comment that was made during that hearing by the residents and the planners, and he made every one of those changes that were addressed. And as you can see, we have an extensive laundry list that goes right along, there's a 10-itemized area of changes, and the most significant at the top is, he did reduce the units. Typically, an apartment complex, you'd like to have 100-plus units for economy's sake, and to make it functionally worthwhile. This started off at 92, and now, he's down to 88, to downsize the size of the building to meet some of the criteria, to lessen the need for any type of variances. His parking has also been lowered under number 2, and the whole ratio itself, or the parking ratio, has been reduced to allow for more landscaping and more open space. The rear yard setback has been increased from 50 to 78 feet, which is significant, because that's where the residential units are budding on this particular site. So, he's extensively increased that setback. And the side yard setback, the building itself stayed the same north to south. But one important factor to note about that building, the portion of the building to the east has no windows. It's just the actual side of the building, so there's nothing looking out onto the adjoining neighbors to the east. The recreational area, this is a very important part, because I think in our city, we like to increase this, as well as our landscaping, and our team has done a great job of more than doubling the size. We went from active recreational area number 6, from 6481 to 16,506 square feet. That is a big difference from the original plan. We have open recreation areas and seating areas have been relocated, as Chris showed on the presentation itself, to give the tenants an opportunity to enjoy the outdoors. A play structure was increased in size, if there are children and visitors that would come and utilize that particular area. And under 6D, all these new amenities were added on, which include a picnic area, pavilion with a grill, the play structure, exterior bike racks, bike repair station, internal biking storage at each entrance, multiple seating areas, multiple open play areas, and a dog station. These are nice attractions that make a better feel for this complex, rather than a straightforward apartment that you typically had seen in the past, trying to get it more towards what we need in today's world. The green space and landscape under number 7, he's increased the green space in the parking lot islands and along the road frontage on Shana. Under B, increased the plant schedule. You can see the type of particular trees, deciduous trees. He raised that from 32 to 57 trees. Evergreens, 37, 39, with appropriate buffers that are significantly higher to the residents to the east, and they're inside the wall. And then, that wall now is a decorative cement wall that gives a pure elimination of any visibility, was it six feet, correct?
That wall?
Correct. So, up to six feet, there's no way you can see through, which helps protect the adjoining property owners. And then, on our side of the property, we have eight to maybe 10-foot pine trees that will be...
We went to 18 to 20 to get a more mature tree.
Sorry. Eighteen to 20 feet, I'm sorry. Which, and if you look at, in the packet, you'll see, from inside the unit looking east, that's a significant buffer for those neighbors, pretty much hides, you know, hides the visibility looking eastward, and then also from the direction of the residents looking westward, you'll see that there's a great screening setup in that direction. Shrubs have increased from 324 to 382. Perennials and grasses are 490, increased to 1,345 plantings. I mean, you're talking about a significant amount of landscaping from the original plan. The lot coverage for the development has decreased to 23% of the entire site. That's a significant number to make a note of. And as I indicated, the wall to the east to screen the residents, to the east itself, is a masonry screen wall. And that was one of the main things that was requested by, you know, the planning, they had pointed that out, as well as our planning department. And the building, one final thing on this list, the portion of the building to the east, he added a hip roof, which actually lowers that level of the building, that if you'll see right there where there's no windows, it kind of gives it that little lower effect, even lesser of an impact of the building itself. So, bottom line is, what Tony has accomplished here is, he's taken a very, very dormant piece of land that was pretty much just sitting there idle, not doing a whole lot for our city, and it's kind of mixed in between commercial and office. You've got the Rogers Roost, that's been there probably 50 years. You've got the Autozone, you've got, you know, you've got some office there. And of recent date, I think three or four years ago, a doctor had presented to possibly put a surgical center there, but that went up in flames and never materialized. And Tony, in the last three years, has been the only developer that's come to this property owner to bring a project before the city. So, that's telling you that, for all intents and purposes, office is just non-existent for this site. And Tony has an eye for looking for property, excuse me, for properties that can have an alternative use, and it's in line with what his portfolio is, and that's apartments. And he also has the shopping centers, 14 and Van Dyke, he's got Walmarts, that whole center, and then he also has by 17 and Van Dyke, he's got that significant center there as well. But he has been very aggressive of recent years with the apartments, and he has a knack for finding parcels such as this to make useful purposes out of them. And we think that, being that in our society today, rental properties are big, we have an insufficient number, I built apartments myself, so I can attest to what he's accomplishing. We're probably, we've got a 30-year run to build more apartments, that's how far behind nationwide that we are. So, I think Tony's brought some very good product to our city. This is another example of what he wants to bring. I don't think we're gonna ever satisfy everybody that's in the neighborhood, or every issue that's been raised, but I think we've done a great job with our team to bring a high-quality product with a good mixture of material. There's nice brick and some long-lasting material to make sure that these units can test the time of wear and tear that we have, especially in Michigan weather, and what you see is a well-kept development that he wants to portray. And the proof in the pudding is what he does have now in the city. You can see how they're on, you know, Sterling Landings is a prime example. You can drive there any given time, you can see that he added more landscaping at that site than was required, and he did a nice job of making the traffic pattern run smoothly, and everything is clean, and he's installed some very good security systems now, when there was an episode in the past that was unrelated to the residents, but it happened on the grounds. So, he's installed a system, and Tony can elaborate on that if need be. But it allows you to basically track any vehicle that goes into his site. It registers immediately, and if they're not registered with the apartment complex, tips off the police, tips off the owner, and then there's an investigation, or the protocol is that you go ahead and find out who this person is. So, it's a great system, and he's invested that in here. We're under a contract zoning proposal, or conditional zoning proposal, which pretty much locks in the landscaping plan, the site plan, the elevations, and the, what am I missing here? You've got site plan, elevations, floor plan, and landscaping plan. All four matters that have been laid out are incorporated in that agreement. So, what that means for the residents is that what you have presented has to be built precisely. You're locked into a contract. It's not like you have a speculative or just a proposed concept, it's an actual documentation of what you can expect to be built on the site, which makes it a far more attractive development proposal than just your typical speculative proposed development. So, I wanted to point that out, because that's a very good tool to have, so that the developer is kept honest in what he's presenting, and also gives the community a sense of assurances that what you're presenting to us is gonna be built. Basically, you know, I believe that this particular use also is a very good transitional use between the commercial that does exist, you've got residential across the street with Fieldstone, it's been there forever, and it's a pretty large complex. As I've indicated earlier, you've got the commercial uses and the office. So, I think in your master land use plan, mixed uses, this falls in line with that. It's something that certainly could fit in, and we feel very comfortable that this project will be very successful in our community. So, we are here to entertain any particular questions you might have. We've got our whole team here, and we appreciate the time that you're giving us tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Rogeri, Mr. Gallo. We'll call you back up during deliberations if we have any questions. Okay? At this time, I'd like to go out to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions or comments? Mr. Nelson?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Speaking on this issue, I'm, again, alarmed at what, the direction of our development here in Sterling Heights. Here we have, again, and it's, we've got a couple other ones coming up here in the next few weeks, but we come into putting a large development onto a postage-size property, 2.89 acres. This should be rather easy. It ended up coming out of your planning commission, a denial. They didn't have the opportunity to look at what you guys would just hand it out, and the changes. But it's denial by that, a suggested denial by the Office of Planning. You had the neighbors in the subdivision right behind it, and those are the ones I'm really concerned about. Not one of them said, "This is a good idea." We're forgetting about the people again. There's, again, without having access to what the variances were reduced to, there were 10 variances that came along with this project. And what happens when it goes from Planning Commission to the City Council, is the City Council has the ability to go ahead and pass this, and there's no variances... And there's no variances that go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Not good, not good. Gives you guys the capability of, of basically controlling what goes on that property. And it's not a good idea. If you could change your zoning rules, you should look at that one to begin with. There's ten of them here. I don't know if he eliminated, uh, the developer eliminated any of those variances. But if they didn't, this should be very easy. Okay? If it isn't, it's kind of pointing toward, uh, just looking at it's close to quid pro quo. Okay? That's what I see. Quid pro quo. If it goes through tonight and goes with, uh, minimal changes or whatever, got something to worry about. Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, yes, sir.
Hi, Council. Long time no see. Glad to, glad to get to see y'all today. My primary concern in Sterling Heights on the subject of housing is on affordable housing. What is important to me is that families on single incomes, making below the median wage, are able to afford to continue to live in our city. That young people, early in their job searches, earlier in their careers, are able to continue to live in the city that they've grown up in. And I'll be the first to admit that I, I am not a housing expert. But what, i- i- if this project is one that expands access to affordable housing, makes it easier for young people and people of lower incomes to live here, I, I ask that you support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ochada. Anybody else on this item? If not, Council, we need a motion. Who wants?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanis.
Resolve to, oop, that's not the suggested action.
It's here.
Yeah, that's what I was reading. Resolve to deny introduction of the map amending amendment of, to zoning ordinance number two-seventy-eight to conditionally rezoned property situated on the east side of Shaner Road between fourteen and fifteen mile roads and section thirty-six from, from two, oh-one. Do I have to read that exactly, Mr. Attorney?
No.
Okay, thank you. Wow. From oh-one, which is business professional office district to RM three, multi, multiple family mid and high-rise districts, case PZ two-two-dash-zero-zero-zero-two.
Support. Been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Yanis?
You know, uh, I drive by this property all the time. And, uh, you know, we, and we've had this discussion. If, I don't know what we're going to do with these, these properties on oh-one. We, we need to do something with them. I, I, I think we're going to have to make some hard decisions going down the road here. We need affordable housing, we need more housing. Unlike some of the other projects that are, are jammed super close into neighborhoods. You know, this one's on a main street. Yes, it backs up to, uh, housing on the east side, but there is a pretty significant wall there. They've, uh, increased the space between the, uh, the green space between the residential area and the, the parking lot. I, I just think we need to do something and this seems to be, uh, sort of the best thing that's been offered up in a long time. I don't see any surgical suites being built there or any, and medical offices. As a matter of fact, the, the.
Mr. Yanis, can I interrupt?
Yes, sir.
Do you want this project to get developed or not get developed?
Uh, I want this project to get developed.
Okay. You made a motion to deny.
Yes. You are, you are correct, sir.
So your motion was incorrect.
Well, that's why I was taking it back, because I, I thought, um, yes. I rescind my motion. Thank you.
All right. I'll give you the floor. Uh, and why don't you just say approve instead of deny?
Uh, yes, I, I apologize. Well, that's why I asked if I had to read it exactly.
Removed.
Don't have to read it exactly. Am I, am I wrong? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Wow.
No, I could rescind.
Let me, uh.
New to this business? Kinda.
Well, that's what I was looking, okay. Resolve to, to introduce, uh. Say it again, Mr. Attorney. You want to just go ahead and read it for me? No, I'm just kidding. Resolve to introduce the map. Okay. Uh, the map amendment of, to zoning ordinance number two-seven-eight to conditionally rezoned property situated on the east side of Shaner Road between fourteen, fifteen mile road and section thirty-six from oh-one business professional office district to RM three, multi-family mid and high-rise districts, case number PZ two-two-dash-zero-zero-zero-two. And Mr. Mayor, everything I previously said.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Would you, do you have any other further comment, Mr. Mayor?
I'm just going to keep my mouth shut at this point.
Okay. No, it's, it's fine.
I, what I, what I just said, I, yeah.
I was, uh, very surprised to see this recommended for denial too. So I think, uh, it was confusing and.
I was confused, I admit it.
And so no, uh, no harm, no foul. Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Yeah, um, briefly, uh, through the chair to Mr. McLeod. Before this was rezoned to office for the surgical suite that did get developed, it got moved to Van Dyke on Van Dyke and Sixteen Mile Road. This was a C, C-two or C-one property, Mr. McLeod?
Mr. McLeod.
Uh, no, this was actually, uh, zoned for office when the Pioneer Medical Center was brought forward on it.
But didn't it, if I remember from going to the planning commission, it was originally zoned commercial before it was rezoned office, was it not?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Okay. I could have swore it was originally a commercial property.
I can, I can go back and check that, but I think, you know, from the standpoint of, um, you know, as, as we've indicated, Pioneer Surgical Center, which is being developed currently on Van Dyke, um, had an approved site plan here to develop the project. Obviously, they chose Van Dyke over this particular location for whatever reasons they chose that for. But no, I mean, at this point, the property's zoned office and obviously that's where Mr. Gallo is trying to rezone it from, so.
Correct. Okay. Well, from that, I guess I have severe concerns with this property. I think, uh, the planning commission got it right. They, they recommended denial. It's a large building sandwiched onto a small lot with a large parking lot almost on top of the building. The, uh, ten variances that I counted, some of them don't matter, like the RV park, which we should eliminate altogether. Other ones are, are real. We're, we're basically allowing a giant parking lot surrounded by a building with very little green space. It's good that it's on Shaner, but at the same time, I just don't think it's a high-quality development. And I think that we've had problems with crime and Mr. Gallo's properties in the past. I think that, that, that's a concern of mine. And I know that we've corrected some of it, but, uh, a, a large-scale building that is not that great of looking, that is going to be at the market rate, is not going to afford, solve the affordable housing crisis in Sterling Heights. So for all those reasons, I'm going to follow with the planning commission, who really delved deep into this. And I'm going to support their decision. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Radke. Anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sirovsky.
So, um, through the chair to Mr. McLeod. Mr. McLeod, the planning commission denied the initial application prior to all of these changes, correct?
Mr. McLeod.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, that is correct. Uh, Mr. Gallo took the comments from the planning commission's denial and then amended the plan. So the planning commission has not seen or acted upon these particular sets of plans.
And these changes were in direct response to the planning commission's denial? Is that also correct?
I, I think as Mr. Rogeri indicated, you know, that was their attempt, was to take what the planning commission said to heart and, and to try to address those comments. Now, whether they fully addressed the, the comments, you know, based on the planning commission, they would have to be the ones that respond to that. But each one of the comments that the planning commissioners made in some form or fashion has been touched. Whether it's been fully addressed or not, you know, that's, that remains to be.
Okay. I am asking your opinion though, so I do have to ask your opinion because you, you were there at that meeting. So if you, to the best of your ability, um, Mr. McLeod, could you, does it appear to be somewhat addressed? I know that you can't give a hundred percent account, but does it appear to you that some, at least some of these were, they were addressed?
Yes. I think that's, I think the simple answer is yes. I think the, the, the deeper dive on that is to say, you know, when the, when the planning commission members say there needs to be more recreation space, yes, there's more. Is it enough? It's still deficient based on ordinance, so your question always arises.
Is it enough?
Is it enough? Or, uh, that the, the, the building being pushed back from the east side, you know, that was a, that was a question as well. You know, the applicant pushed the building back twenty-some-odd feet. Is that enough? Maybe it is. You know, so, but again, each one of those comments were touched in some form or fashion. It's just a question of how far. Again, they were pretty significant changes. You know, I think the overall density, uh, number is probably the biggest one that still looms out there. And whether or not, you know, going from ninety-two to eighty-eight, um, if you, that number continues to creep down, we've heard the commentary from Mr. Rogeri in regards to the total number. But if that number continues to creep down, those variance requests get much smaller or even go away because most of the variance requests, um, other than the ones that councilperson Radke noted, are largely based off of density. Parking is based off of density. Recreation space is based off of density. Overall density obviously is based on density. So, um, those things all start to ratchet down as that number of eighty-eight. You know, if it stays there or if it continues to come down itself, those variances all get, you know, a little bit more tolerable in terms of, of the overall scheme.
Okay. I appreciate your honesty. Thank you very much. So I, I'll reiterate again, it went, recreation area went from six thousand four hundred and eighty-one to sixteen thousand five hundred and six. That's ten thousand square feet. That's a lot of square feet. I mean, that's bigger than my house. So.
You don't have a ten thousand square foot house?
Okay. I don't even have a three thousand square foot house, so that's a lot bigger than my house. That's a lot bigger than about five of them. So I appreciate this. I really do appreciate your attempt, and I don't even mean attempt, your success at really reaching some of these, Mr. Gallo, and, and your, your, um, people who have helped you, all of your people who have helped you. So I do see that you, there've been a lot of changes. And I do understand that the, the planning commission did not see these changes and may have had a different, um, answer for you guys if there had been these changes in front of them. I also am big, and the Keldian community would agree to that, that I'm very big on having a, a wall in between a high, high-density area that's going to have a lot of activity and a residential area. And so I, I do appreciate that you did put in a wall. I see that there is not a wall, um, in some of the other areas. And the residents who are, there's, there, it looks to, it appears to me that there are four houses that are about this property. But there are quite a few residents along the many area, you know, within this neighborhood that about many of the different other properties that do not have such, um, opportunities to have a wall. I don't know if those other properties do provide walls such as Rogers Roost. Um, Mr. McLeod, can you answer that question for me? Do other, of the, the other properties that, about the residential areas, do you provide a wall or some type of barrier between their neighborhood, the neighborhood houses and those properties?
I believe most of them do. That is a normal requirement for any time commercial touches, uh, touches.
I appreciate that, yeah, because that would, that would be my request, of course. So I do appreciate that. And they should, that, that's, I would say, common courtesy, but you know how that is, not always common. So, okay, great. That is good news for me. And so I'm going to one-seventeen. Okay, great. And so I, I, I don't, I don't begrudge Mr. Gallo his ability to develop in my city, our city. I'll take a little personal pride in it. And I don't begrudge that trying to develop a piece of property that has not been developed for a very long time with something that could be a good product. And I don't begrudge him the fact that criminals took over his previous establishment and other people, certainly judges and other people, were not able to provide him the ability to have justice and seek certain, anyway, we won't go into that. But he was not able to evict certain residents even though he tried. And that's a whole different thing. But in addition to this, uh, and seeing all of these changes that he made to this property, I appreciate what he's trying to do and, and both Mr. Gallows are trying to do. And I, I think that this has been a good, it, it's a nice, I'm in favor of it. I, I appreciate it. And I'm, I think that it's better than having a piece of commercial property next to residence. It's a residential property. Better than a business coming, with people coming and going all day long. Better than a commercial property with a lot of noise or better than any, an office with people coming and going. So I'm in favor of it and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mrs. Sirovsky. Anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Um, through the chair to Mr. McLeod. Mr. McLeod, did you get a copy of this before tonight?
Mr. McLeod.
Uh, I, I didn't see what you have.
These are all the changes that they made since the planning commission?
We, we did receive a, uh, we did receive, I mean, obviously commentary, I don't know if this is exact one, but it, the, the applicant has been very, I mean, forthright in terms of the changes they made, so.
I understand that, but it's not reflective in our backup material.
So the, the memo that you received from me should largely mimic. I haven't read it word for word. But the June seventh memo you received from us should reflect these changes.
Okay. While some of these variances I don't really care about. I don't care about the recreation. I don't care about the sign. What I care about is, um, the recreation area, or I, I meant the recreational parking area. I don't, I, I don't care that you want to eliminate that. What I care about is the recreation area, sure, it was increased to sixteen thousand five hundred and six, but it should be forty-six thousand. So that is still a huge gap. I also hate having the sidewalk or no sidewalk essentially. You have the car bumper at the front door. I, I, that is an issue for me. You have, what, seven feet between, through the chair to Mr. Gallo or, okay?
Through the chair. Um, so there is a, uh, there's a seven-foot greenbelt between the building and sidewalk.
Right. There's a seven-foot, which isn't, which isn't much.
Correct. And I understand your concern about the recreation space. But when you're developing in an established community, as Sterling Heights is, unfortunately, we don't have the luxury of buying forty or fifty acres of land for development. So we're, we're left with a lot of residual land that's left over. So that's why we run into these developmental challenges that we have. You know, and again, we did reduce the unit count, um, you know, pursuant to some of the suggestions at planning.
And I appreciate that. I appreciate that. And, and no fault to Mr. McLeod, but you sent us a memo today. Is that what you said today? We got the memo from you?
No, it, it was in the packet. It is part of your backup.
I did not see it.
Yeah, there was a two-page, uh, two-page correspondence from our office. It was for the June seventh meeting. I apologize. I, it wasn't dated and sent to you today, but it was dated for today's meeting.
Page one-hundred, you said?
I'm sorry. Bear with me.
It should be staff re, staff report addendum.
Okay. Okay. I apologize. It is there. I just must have missed it. The reduction of units and the proposed yard setback in the back increased twenty-eight feet, and I appreciate that. I'm surprised none of the neighbors showed up tonight because they were at the last, they were at the planning commission meeting. Mr. Gallo?
There, there were three or four residents that spoke. We also took their comments into consideration as well. As you know, I'm no stranger to the city. And, uh, we, we do care about the neighbors, right? And it, I truly sincerely, as the owner of the company, buck stops with me. And that's why our team, um, came up and made the decision to make the changes, not only that the planning commission was deliberating about, but also that the neighbors, um, had concerns with. And I will also tell you that, you know, because for your benefit, since you weren't at the meeting, there was deliberations between the planning commission going back and forth. And I'll be very truthful with you, we were very shocked that it was denied. And some of the folks, when they were voting, um, I can tell you that they were sort of making comments like, gee, you know, if you had changed this or changed that, well, instead of getting a tableau motion, there was already a motion for denial on the floor. It had support. And then, of course, a roll call was called. But, uh, make no mistake, we made every attempt, a genuine attempt to, um, address everyone's concerns. And another thing I want you to know is, you know, we have three hundred and sixty-one units of apartments under construction right at the moment in different communities. We're committed to building multifamily residential for folks to live. We're committed to building multifamily residential for folks to live and thrive. And I can tell you, and I'm not just saying it because you're the elected officials here, my favorite town is Sterling Heights I work in. You guys have been great to me, every one of you. And whether we agree or disagree, however you vote, that's, you know, you have the right to do that. But I got to tell you, you've been good to our company. And I hope that, you know, we've also created some new residents. And this is not the only project I'm coming forward here in the community. I have a lot of other things in the works. And I hope we will earn your support. And I promise you, we'll do a good job.
And for the record, I did watch the meeting, so.
So you see what I was saying.
So I did see what was going on. And I did see that the residents did get up and speak. And that's why I'm surprised that none of them showed up. Thought of something else. I'm going to hold off on my opinion right now. And I know, you know, you're very embedded in our community and you do a quality job. I just have some concerns. I'm not sure yet. I'm going to listen to my colleagues and we'll see where it goes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Mrs. Koski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to Mr. McLeod. In the synopsis that you gave us from the June seventh, you mentioned in here a ten percent reduction in units would bring the site compliance, essentially into compliance with density requirements. If they were to reduce that by ten percent, are we talking about reducing it down to seventy-nine units? Approximately?
Yeah, if you went down, even if you're at eighty, I mean, it's a matter.
Okay, let's say eighty units.
Right, and so at that point, you know, that the number may not be perfect. But as you draw that density number down, as I described before, not only will the actual density variance requests be, you know, either eliminated or brought, you know, much further into compliance, but then those other numbers come even further into compliance.
Okay, can you give us an idea of what or how close it would bring the property to?
Yeah, I think, you know, in terms of if you dropped, so number one, part of that equation is just the determination by the applicant in terms of whether those are two-bedroom or one-bedroom units that are dropped out of the equation. Because our formula is then based off of those types of units. So, and those density calculations vary between those two types of units.
Take five percent off of each.
Okay, so realistically.
What I'm looking for is what would the difference in parking, rear yard setback, side yard setback, front yard setback? How would those numbers come out? Can you calculate quickly?
Yeah, so in terms of rear yard, rear yard setback, side yard setbacks, things are fine in terms of the development as it stands now. If those units came off, the building shifted slightly back further to the east, I would imagine that that building setback could be met in terms of the front yard setback. In regards to parking space, they would drop generally ten plus twelve and a half. They would drop an additional twenty some odd parking spots. And to be honest with you, I mean, I think even the Planning Commission, not to speak for them, but, you know, generally speaking, if your number's around two parking spots per unit, you're generally in a good range. I think Mr. Gallo's about one point nine. You know, so that one's probably, again, it's a variance, but it's generally in check with common practice, so to speak. Recreation space, if you dropped eight units, that would, number would drop basically four thousand square feet. So you'd go down to forty thousand square feet. Conversely, if you took all that, you could probably further increase the recreation space, maybe not proportionally, but your recreation space could jump up from sixteen thousand, maybe a couple extra thousand square feet or so in recreation space. Again, while that recreation number requirement comes down. So again, not perfectly in check, but you're starting to make those variances closer, if you will, or more palatable. You know, but again, it's, you know, that's, that's one of the equations. Like I said, it's, a lot of it's based on unit type and so forth. But I think, you know, you would either eliminate or bring other total of, you know, probably five of the various requests, either negate them or bring them further into check.
In other words, something that the Planning Commission could live with.
Again, not to speak for them, but I think as everyone's kind of noted here, I mean, it was a three to five or five to three, depending on how you word that motion. You know, so there was, you know, questions as to whether or not this project should be a go anyway. But I think, you know, generally speaking, for the Planning Commission, their thought was it was just too much on this particular piece of property. So again, if you start to work backwards and delete that density or reduce that density, those concerns start to alleviate themselves just by reducing the pressure on the property, by, again, reducing density, reducing parking, increasing the potential for green space. So that gets it, again, closer in check with where the ordinance would anticipate this being.
Okay. Through the chair to Mr. Gallo.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Hello, Mr. Gallo.
Yes, ma'am.
How are you?
I'm good. I was listening.
Good, okay. Listen to me, please, for one moment. If we were to reduce the units by ten percent, could you live with eighty units? Take the five percent off of one-bedroom, take five percent off of two-bedroom, however you cut it. Could you live with that? Could you build and make a profit off of that?
Thank you for the question, Councilwoman. Is, Mr. Rogeri said a moment ago, our typical business plan is a hundred units or greater per site. Today's construction costs are significantly increased. The availability of materials is an ongoing concern. It would be very difficult to make the numbers work with less than the eighty-eight units that we have today. Is it an impossible feat? No, but I would tell you that it's a very tall challenge. We made every best effort by voluntarily going from ninety-two units, which was already lower than what we normally would underwrite the deal at, to eighty-eight units. So we're hoping to get that approved. That's, I guess, the response, is we're hoping to get the eighty-eight approved. If that's in this body's wisdom.
I'm having a hard time with eighty-eight units, very hard.
I understand.
I know you do. Beautiful work. But that property is not large enough to handle eighty-eight units, in my opinion.
Okay, it's a good question. So I can answer maybe a little better for everyone's understanding. If we were to take off one extra wing, it would be a reduction of six units because we have two, four, six, you know, six units per side. If we removed six one-bedroom units, we would gain, and that's what I was asking the gentleman earlier, we would gain, how many feet was it? About twenty-two additional feet for the rear. So that building would be shifted, not shifted, but it would decrease in size by about twenty-two feet. So the next increment, if you will, it wouldn't be eighty, it would be eighty-two. Because there's six, six units per floor, you know, per wing. So it would be eighty-two units would be the next reduction. Then the next reduction from that would be another six units.
I just clarified it with the architect and the engineer. And we can squeeze six more reduction of the units, that's it.
Yeah.
Can't go any more than that. Otherwise, just got to call it quits.
Right.
Or you could cut off one floor.
Go two floors, yeah, but, you know, construction's still there. No, no, I understand. You know, and the other thing, too, is we talk about, you know, parking for a moment. And, you know, we've seen the Planning Commission in the past, and Chris has echoed that comment, that they're satisfied at pretty much one point nine spaces per unit, one point eight-five, one point nine units per space, you know, of parking per unit. And we are at one point nine oh, so.
I'm just looking at the overall density.
Yes, ma'am.
Not counting parking space.
I understand.
I don't care if you have just one.
If it's absolutely essential, we can do eighty-two. And that's the best we can do.
That is correct statement. I would walk for less, I have to look at the finances, see if less than eighty-eight works. Is a true answer, so.
And I have to look at the density.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
So I will think about that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mrs. Zarco?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Taylor. First of all, I'm going to start on the positive. Because Mr. Rogeri, Mr. Gallo, I trust both of you to come here and you're going to give us our best offer and do what's right for the city. I have to agree about the density, but I have a few other questions that I hope that if you can't answer, the city attorney can answer some of these for me. And then let's do this so that you have a really good chance of getting this project through.
Yes.
Okay. Through the chair to Mr. Kachubski. On what date was Mr. Gallo denied? And how long does he have to wait before he can come back to the Planning Commission with a revised proposal?
Mr. Kachubski? Well, there's, I defer to Chris on one part of it, but counsel could remand it back to Planning Commission for further consideration of the changes that were made. So that's an option, so they can go back immediately. The other would be, if it was denied here, generally speaking, we wait about a year, I believe, before they can come back.
It's one year? Okay, that's, that was my, the biggest question I had is, when could he go back to the Planning Commission? But can we refer it back to the Planning Commission within a year?
You can refer it back right now.
Do it now.
We could do it tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Well, here's my other thought, is behind the auto parts store, there's a parcel that it's a green space. Does the auto parts store own that? Or does, are they willing to sell it? Oh, darn. See, I'm just striking out here for you, Mr. Gallo. I mean, at least you were thinking the same thing I was thinking, that it would expand that property there. Okay. Pardon me?
I also tried to buy the shopping center on the corner of fourteen and, I think the ownership was not interested in selling it.
That's really too bad, too. And I don't need to talk without going through the chair. But through the chair, Mr. Gallo, do you have any other comments on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so then let me give you an opportunity to speak.
Okay, one important comment is, is that unfortunately, it's our problem, not your problem. But it is, it's a significant issue. We are under contract to purchase the property. Our contract expires. Unfortunately, we were tabled a couple times. I know we had a few delays and things of that sort. And with all due respect, we're at the point where we either have to move forward or we have to regretfully cancel the contract. There is no more further time on the contract. So I guess the bottom line is, is if the body here is asking me for an additional concession, we would be willing to go to eighty-two units. We would be willing to cut that off, to Ms. Koski's point. We would eliminate the six one-bedroom units and would propose eighty-two units. We would, that additional space will add to the rear of the development, will increase the recreation space in answering that. But with all due respect, that is, I don't have anything else to give. I've given you everything I can and then some.
Okay. And I appreciate what you're saying. Although, in making this decision, and I understand the mistake that was made at the Planning Commission where it should have been postponed, and it wasn't. But I have to tell you, the way everything's been presented tonight, and I know you have a deadline, I would be more comfortable this going back to the Planning Commission. They see everything that you have, you know, just in this condition of rezoning and what you're willing to do, and then it coming back to us again. I think that's fair on our part, your part, and the Planning Commission's. And I think that's just the way we should do it. And I understand the timeline, and I can only wish you luck on extending it.
I'll just tell you now, we would cancel.
Okay.
It's, I understand. So you got to vote how you may.
Yes, but that's, that's the way I see it. If I did it for you, I would do it for the next person and the one after that. So, and I'm sure you understand that.
I do, but I hope that this body understands that, you know, we'll just move on.
Okay. Thank you, no further questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? What? Can I get a second shot at this, please?
The mayor hasn't gone first.
You can have a second shot. You can go, you go first, go ahead. Let me go first. Yes, sir. All right, I struggle to even know where to begin. I'm not sure who we are protecting here. We're debating a lot about eighty-eight, eighty-two, ninety-four, six thousand square feet of recreational space, fourteen thousand square feet of recreational space. Who are we protecting? We're not protecting the three houses in the back, none of whom are here. We're not protecting the general public. I live miles away. It will not affect me in one bit, whether it's eighty-eight or ninety-two. It won't affect Mr. Nelson, who lives close to me. Who are we protecting? And by denying this, I only see losers. The losers will be the eighty-eight families who need somewhere to live. We are in a severe housing crisis. Not just a housing shortage, a housing crisis. Millions of people are underhomed, underhoused in this country. They are going to be, as Mr. Rogeri said, the studies show they're going to be building multifamily housing anywhere they can find to build it for thirty years, for generations. We're going to continue building housing and building housing, and it's still not going to be enough. We have an epidemic of housing shortage in this country. And in this area alone, we have housing prices that are skyrocketing, that are pricing people completely out of the market. You know it better than anyone else, Mr. Radke. You know it better than anyone else. You talk about it here all the time. And the solution to the housing crisis is not just build below-market rent properties. The problem is, you're not, developers are not going to do that. Developers are in the business to make money. And without, as Mr. Gallo said, he's not going to, why would he do that? Why would he extend himself? He has employees, he has family, he has people that rely on him to take on projects that pay the bills. And if they're not paying the bills, the bank's going to pull the note. The bank's going to take his house. So he has to build projects that actually make financial sense, okay? So until the federal government or the state government starts throwing out money to developers like Mr. Gallo to build subsidized housing, he's going to build the projects that make financial sense. But what will happen over time is as the housing stock increases, the prices will come down. It's simple supply and demand. I think we have a moral obligation, as elected officials in the roles that we have voluntarily taken on, to do what we can to help people get into housing that don't have the opportunity to right now. If we deny this, who are we helping? I haven't heard it. I haven't heard one of my colleagues say, I'm going to have to respectfully vote no on this because it's going to hurt one of my constituents. It's going to hurt somebody in the community here already. It's going to hurt, who's it going to hurt? Who is it going to hurt? And respectfully, with those three properties that back up to it, there was a time when somebody was looking at those houses being constructed and said, gee, I really wish they weren't constructing those houses because I got a nice view right here. I got a nice patch of trees. I got a nice patch of forest. I got nice animals that roam around freely, wildlife. But they built those houses. We need housing for people to live in. This is pretty basic stuff. And even if it's not below-market rent, it's going to help reduce the skyrocketing cost of housing. It's going to help people who have nowhere to live get to somewhere. It's just a domino effect. The people who can afford to live here that want to go to fourteen and Sheena are going to move from somebody somewhere else that's a little less desirable. And that's going to allow people from a little less desirable area and a little less desirable area to move up. It's going to provide upward mobility for people all along the ladder. And if we don't do it, we're going to have an empty plot of land that can't be developed, that won't be developed. Nobody is building office there. I guarantee you, nobody's building office. We can put a car wash there, right? We can put another AutoZone there. We can put a little strip center there. Or we can build housing for people who desperately need it. I don't know who we're protecting by voting no. Are we protecting the people that don't want to move into an apartment complex unless there's five hundred square feet of recreational area? Mr. Gallo, you think you're going to have anybody interested in moving into this apartment complex?
Mayor Taylor, the two hundred units that we just finished in this community.
Mayor Taylor, the two hundred units that we just finished in this community are 100% leased.
How long did that take?
Less than five months. We just finished a community in Chesfield Township, one hundred and thirty-two units. We're 100% leased. We're just getting the last C of O right now. There is a major housing crisis here. There's a major supply issue here, and there's a major inflation issue here. It's real. It's serious. We're just finishing a project in Shelby Township. We have another hundred and five townhomes there. We have a waiting list of 260 residents, 260 people bidding to lease from us. I know, if you'll allow me to build this, we will do a good job. We'll be great neighbors, and I can tell you that it will be leased immediately, and we'll get new residents in this community.
And while people will bring up, well, you have those crime instance... You had those instances of crime at 15 and Van Dyke. You responded in a way that I haven't seen any other developer, any other stakeholder in this community do it. And if you want to talk about crime, here's what's really at stake here. The eighty-eight units that we have here... Now, probably these aren't people, as I said, was saying earlier, these aren't people that are gonna be on the streets that now have a home. But we know, you know, our housing stock is more affordable than Shelby Township. Shelby's is a little more affordable than Washington. Washington's a little bit more affordable than Bloomfield. Bloomfield's a little bit more affordable maybe than Birmingham, and Birmingham's not more affordable than anywhere. And it works in reverse, too. Our housing stock is more affordable than Warren's. Warren's is more affordable than ours. East Point's more affordable than Warren. Detroit's more affordable than East Point. The worst neighborhoods in Detroit are more affordable. And when you get into that, it's not about what's more affordable, it's about what is safe. Where can people actually raise a family? So when you build, when we're building more housing, dense housing, and we're saying, you know what? The regulations that we imposed twenty-five, thirty, forty, fifty years ago, they don't make sense when you're in an historic housing crisis like we are. What we're doing is giving that upward mobility to people. So we're taking people out of crime-ridden poverty, school districts where kids aren't learning anything, and giving those families the chance to move up a little bit. Because as people climb up the ladder, they're getting better and better and better, and they're finding more prosperity for their families. They're finding safer neighborhoods for their families. They're finding better schools for their families. So when we say no to a project like this, we're telling eighty-eight families at the very bottom, you're stuck. That's it. You have nowhere to go. And it may not seem like a lot, but it is. And we don't... And here's the thing. We don't just need this one, we need this one, and the next 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 one, until there isn't anywhere else to build. I mean, I seriously believe we have a moral obligation as leaders of this community to do what we can to help bring people up, bring people out of poverty, not just in our community, but in our entire region. And I'm sorry, I don't see any downside to doing this. I only see the upside. And I encourage my colleagues... I'll let you all have another round. I encourage you to tell me where I'm wrong. Tell me who is losing by building more housing. Tell me who's losing by saying, you know what? What we put into place. Okay, we didn't do it. It was forty, fifty... It was however many years ago that we built these regulations. Frankly, I couldn't care less about these regulations. They're not my regulations. I care about doing something to help solve this crisis. And this is the way we do it. So I'll give it back to you, Mr. Yenaz.
Who wrote that question down, Henry?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I just want to say thank you for your comments. They're greatly appreciated.
Through the chair to Mr. McLeod. There's in your staff report from April, on page 11, there's a section here that talks about the surgical suite. And, you know, that's what the property was... First of all, let me back up. As far as you know, Mr. McLeod, has anything ever existed on that property? Was it a horse farm, a dairy farm, tractor pull site?
I don't know if I know the history that far back, but no, there's been, as far as my... Our knowledge is no, obviously, development on the site, whether it was used as pasture land or fur trading at one point, who knows? But...
A lot of beaver paths, yes. So that site's been vacant for...
No river.
Forever. And so there was a surgical site that they were looking at. That site ended up moving over to Van Dyke. Was it because... Do you know why they moved?
No, we don't. I would assume, obviously, for the number of people passing by, but the surgical center is usually more of a destination anyway. Maybe it was more central and maybe more accessible to, you know, their population base, so to speak. But we don't know the specific rationale for it.
And possibly, of course, you just have to assume this, that possibly the building just to the north of this property used to be a Henry Ford site, a medical suite there. And it's significantly empty, I think. Or not empty, but there's a lot of vacancies in that building. So anyways, going back to your staff report, it says, however, the fact that a use was approved and in the development phase in recent years indicates that the site can generally be utilized as currently zoned. Did you write that, or staff... Your staff wrote it, or...
I'm ultimately responsible for it.
Ultimately responsible for it. So how many people in the last decade, other than the surgical suite, have come and tried to put something on that property?
On that particular property is my tenure here, you know, that's...
In the time you've been here?
Yeah, that's been the one.
That's been the one?
Correct.
The one. You know, I wholeheartedly agree with the mayor. Not to disparage AutoZone, because that's my AutoZone, that's where I shop. But AutoZone on one side and this medical office suite on the other side. I don't know that, you know, and, you know, on a busy road, on Shaner Road, I don't know that that's super prime real estate for, you know, $350,000 brownstones. And to the mayor's point, we need housing. And we have other projects in the city where we're fighting tooth and nail because we're trying to jam them in, you know, next to a residential, a large residential area, what have you. We need housing, and this property's just sitting there. And I agree with my friend and colleague, Councilwoman Zarco, about process. I'm a big process guy. Planning Commission is there to do their job and to, you know, protect the city and development. I get that. But we got a guy here ready to build, ready to build housing, ready to spend money. He's a good corporate citizen. He keeps his properties up. His back is to the wall when it comes to, you know, exercising his option. He's ready to go. That land is vacant, and I don't know why we're holding this up. So, Mr. Mayor, I agree with you. I think this property should move forward. I do agree that... I do appreciate, I should say, I do appreciate the fact that you're willing to lop off six units. I know that six units is money. Through the chair to Mr. Gallo. Would you be open to saying how much a unit is valued at?
Thirteen to sixteen hundred a month.
Thirteen to sixteen hundred a month.
Yeah, that's a big drop. Significant.
That's significant. What's your... If you don't mind me asking, what your monthly cost is to run a development like that? I'm assuming you have to have somebody on staff full-time and...
Well, that's a very good question. At all of our properties, we have full-time staff. That's the issue. We have... We will have three staff at this site. A full-time manager, a leasing agent, and a full-time maintenance person. Designed, integrated in this building is a maintenance and off... Maintenance and leasing office. So we have three full-time employees.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to vote yes on this project. Thank you.
Anyone else on...
Mr. Mayor, just very briefly. Two things. Looking at the master plan, this entire segment is local commercial. I received a text when I stepped down to the hallway that a member of our ZBA said that this was rezoned from commercial to office within the last... I don't know however long, but they sent me a text saying, "I'm watching at home," and it was rezoned. But more than that, I appreciate your speech, and I agree with you. And we have to make sure that only are we creating more housing, we're creating housing people want to live in that are gonna last a long time. To get to Kenzieon, I appreciate Mr. Gallo's willingness to build. I do not think if we deny this project, it's gonna cost him his house, though. I think he's gonna be okay. So I'm still... I would refer this back to the Planning Commission. You know, I... We got a horde of changes here. I'd like to get their opinion on it. That's their job. They give us a recommendation. We have empowered them to give us recommendations. Maybe they'll come back differently. Maybe we'll all assess this differently. But I would refer this back to the Planning Commission and have them make a decision and then go from there. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mayor Taylor. Through the chair to Mr. McLeod. So in the Planning Commission, it came up, is this spot zoning? Is this not spot zoning? Can you answer that question?
Mr. McLeod?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is kind of the million-dollar question. You know, I think, you know, realistically, if this goes multiple-family, I think you're taking that step where you're kind of reevaluating this property and the properties to the south. And there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, you could simply... We kind of took that leap of faith with Mr. Gallo's property on Shaner up by Hall Road, saying that that could be the catalyst to redevelop your shopping centers and that general lakeside area there. Obviously, in the world of retail, to have an aging shopping center that has a significant, you know, acreage to it, and again, not to disparage the auto parts place. You know, I think, again, if this rezoning goes through, then I think as part of our master plan evaluation, we just simply reevaluate what this corner looks like. And there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, the city's moving that direction in a multitude of areas anyway already. You know, this may become just another one of those areas where we ultimately get to the point where, you know, this becomes a mixed-use area as well, and this is the end cap that's multiple-family. You know, and I think that could be, you know, something that could easily be justified in a future master plan amendment. Is it a spot zone in the technical sense right now? The answer is probably yes. If you stipulate, though, that this is part of a further movement going forward to say that this is a transitional piece that ultimately is gonna lead to something different than that you would expect when the Planning Commission reviews it, and then you also potentially, you know, if you're toeing through the master plan process, that this becomes a future, you know, a future redevelopment area, then, you know, I think that softens the blow, so to speak. There's nothing saying you can't go contrary to a master plan. You just need good justification to do it.
So not to put you on the spot, but a few years back, we had an urban planner come in and essentially go through the community on how we could do different developments throughout the city. Do you recall what was planned for this area?
For this particular area? If that was prior to the 2017 master plan, I don't. The 2017 master plan basically calls for this area to be local commercial. I mean, so... But again, you know, taking a look at what the potential is, I mean, we have twelve different nodes throughout the community that we've, you know, we basically had said at major intersections, and 14 and Shaner is obviously a pretty major intersection, where, you know, mixed use could be the play. And one of the things we've identified in that master plan, and I would imagine the master plan going forward, is to say, shopping centers that are struggling, there's no magic wand just to simply say, retail's gonna come storming back. Or there's no magic wand to say, all of a sudden, the shopping center's just magically gonna reappear. You know, the shopping center to the south is gonna have to be reimagined. There's no doubt about it. What that land use may be, we can debate that out as part of the master plan process. But to say that it's always gonna be this solid retail from this particular property to the south, it's probably not realistic. But we do, as part of our planning process, have to note that, you know, the current master plan does call for this area to be commercial. But again, you know, there's a master plan as a guide. A master plan is to be, you know, this kind of set your course. But if we're saying that our course isn't, you know, needs to veer slightly to adjust to or drastically, depending on how you want to look at it, to address what's going on in current society, what's going on with retail, what's going on, obviously, through a pandemic and everything else, there's nothing saying you can't do that. No one's gonna say that, you know, that's a horrible decision. But again, you just have to have justification to do it, and you have to stick by it. If we say, yeah, we're gonna rezone this, and then we're gonna say, you know what? We're gonna keep all that area to the south as pure commercial. We're not gonna address anything, then someone's gonna come back and say, this kind of sticks out, right? But if you say, yeah, this is the first part of a move forward, then I don't think that there's necessarily... That's necessarily a bad thing.
Okay. So through the chair to Mr. Gallo. Mrs. Koski has me a little confused here. Are we looking at eighty-two units right now, or are we looking at eighty-eight units right now?
We're proposing eighty-eight units at the moment. If this body chooses in its wisdom that they want less than that, then that's something you'll tell me. But at the moment, we're proposing eighty-eight.
But as a conditional rezoning, we can't ask you for that. You have to offer it to us.
Okay. If that's what this body's asking, as I mentioned earlier, we would go to eighty-two units. After that, we will, you know, if we can't get to eighty-two units, we will walk from the project.
I guess I'm surprised that you're saying there could be no extension so that we could send this back to...
No, the...
Wait a minute. Let me finish, please. So we can't send it back to the Planning Commission only because this land has been vacant for so long? You would think that the seller would be willing to work with you.
Very candid with you, and I'll answer that.
Okay.
There's a $50,000 non-refundable deposit that becomes due and payable once I extend. I'm not willing to do that.
Okay.
Period. I just, it's...
Fair enough. No, that's...
That's the problem.
Fair enough. I didn't understand that, and that's why.
Yep.
Okay. And as far as security, do you have anything planned? Are you planning Ring doorbells? Are you planning any...
At all our developments, we have exterior cameras, and yes, here will be no different.
Okay.
We're not gonna use the Ring doorbell system. We've experienced some issues at another development, but we do plan on having exterior cameras throughout the facility, yes.
Okay. Eighty-two's a little easier for me to swallow. I'm just saying.
I understand.
But you have to offer it.
Which I did.
And I guess, Mayor Taylor, you know, I felt like it was Court TV closing arguments. You made some good points. So I appreciate your comments as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to go a second time?
Mrs. Koski.
Mrs. Koski.
You go first. Go on.
Me first?
Go ahead, Ms. Koski.
Senori.
Come on.
I'm right behind you, so don't worry about it.
Yes, you are. Mr. McLeod, can we live with eighty-two units? Look at you, our planning department. You are supposed to give us professional advice. Can we live with eighty-two units?
I mean, the technical answer is, we can live with anything that the City Council ultimately approves. But no, I think, again, as you draw closer to meeting the requirements of the ordinance, that's always a good thing. The asterisk on that comment is that, and I think the mayor touched on it, is the... What our ordinance is right now gets you what the City of Australian Heights has gotten for the last twenty, thirty, forty years.
Yes.
And that has proven to be very good. The problem is, is that where that syncs up with the market today and where development occurs today, those may not be completely in line. And that's okay. I mean, but just know that, you know, the development world is talking density, the planning world's talking density. We're even talking density in a lot of different areas of the city. But, you know, so you may not get totally in line with our zoning ordinance for infill developments. Infill developments are notoriously more dense. There's a reason why they're still there. They're problem pieces. They're pieces that don't necessarily fit. There's high costs, and whatever the factor is, infill developments are notoriously more dense. And again, there's nothing wrong with that. It's just a matter of making sure that the proposal that's in front of you is the right proposal to solve that problem. And, you know, if the Council ultimately deems that eighty-two units in this particular form, and that amount of open space, that amount of landscaping and so forth, is the appropriate way to do that, that's a good solution then. I mean, you know, I think, I agree, I mean, what is the use of this property ultimately gonna be? In the grand scheme, it's probably not going to be solely an office building. Could it be? Could you land the golden egg again? Or not even the golden egg? I shouldn't even say it that way. But could you land an office development again? Absolutely. I, I believe that. I mean, it's not going to be, they're not going to be knocking down the door. I mean, obviously, we've already shown that. But, um, if the right office use comes along, it might happen. But if, if, again, going back to the specific proposal, it's a very long-winded answer, I apologize, but I, I think ultimately 82 gets you much closer to where, you know, the ordinance wants this development to be.
Okay. Through the chair to, um, Mr. Gallo. Okay. As we said, you have to make your proposal to us. Would you like to make a proposal to me to convince me to vote for your project?
Yes, I said that earlier. I would go to 82 units. I would take, remove six one-bedroom units, and we would add the, uh, the rest of the space that, where those units was, to the o- open space area.
How about some nice mature trees, too?
That's in the proposal, yes. Yes, that is in the proposal already, yes.
Maybe a couple more?
Well, I don't think we can physically fit more. We have 1,100 and, like, 1,400 perennials. Um, I, I don't, I mean, if you're asking me just for the sake of adding trees, make a suggestion, I guess, but we've, we've put our best foot forward.
My main concern is, I don't want parking directly up against the building. I want some space there. I want a little bit of room where we need it.
Well, you're asking for something with respect to the width of the building, and that is not possible. I can provide to you, because the width is the width of the parcel. We already have side yard setbacks. So, if you're asking me to reduce the width of the building, that's not something we can do.
No, 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 no. Where you take the six units off.
Yes, ma'am. From the back, yes, ma'am.
Okay. There's no parking there?
There is parking there, yes. There's, there's a, 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 a driveline there. There's, if you wanted to add parking there in that 26.
No, I don't want to add any parking.
Okay, tell, tell me what you would like, so I can get better assistance from you.
Variance?
Pardon me?
Is there a variance?
There's not, there's not a variance. No, no, we, we've, we've, we've addressed that by taking off the original s- six units that we took off. We addressed that. But if you're now asking me for another six units...
No, no, I'm not.
Oh, okay.
It was addressed with the first reduction that you need, that...
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
So, all you would be offering us now is 82 units?
That's correct. Yes, let me start over again. So, we originally had 92 units proposed there. We came with a proposal this evening for 88 units. You had asked earlier if we were willing to reduce that. I am hereby offering to reduce it by six units. So, 88 less six will be 82 units is what we would propose. We would remove six one-bedroom units from the proposal. Yes. That's what I'm offering.
No drawings?
I can, I can work on it.
Mr. Rogeri, we usually get drawings. Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is our co-
Okay, me and Taylor, thank you very much. Um, I'm going to say, if you would have asked me this afternoon without hearing any of this, I would have said, I'm going with the recommendation of the city. Through the chair to Mr. McLeod. Is the only reason why you recommended to deny this was because the Planning Commission recommendation was to not, to deny? And you didn't give us an alternative action?
Yes, you didn't. Mr. McLeod.
Well, our, our normal protocol is to give you one action. Um, there has been a very remote instance, maybe here or there, where you've maybe gotten an alternate, but, um, for the most part, you typically get one motion. With that being said, um, in terms of the recommendation that came from administration, you know, realistically, it was a culmination of things. One is the fact that, you know, obviously, the Planning Commission's recommendation does stand. But also from the standpoint of, you know, it's part of our job as, as planners, is to uphold, obviously, the master plan, it's to uphold the zoning ordinance, and it's uphold, it's to uphold, you know, good planning principles. So, I think, you know, one of the things that was kind of the theme of the Planning Commission was, at the time that the Planning Commission reviewed this, was that it was too much development on a particular piece of property. Obviously, from Planning Commission to coming into tonight, that proposal became better, going from 92 to 88, increasing landscaping, increasing green belts, increasing recreation space. That was moving in the right direction. Here tonight, we've taken another jump to say, now we've gone down another six units, and in all likelihood, increasing green space. Green space probably brings about a little bit more landscaping and so forth. But, um, but no, I think, and to answer your question directly, you know, our recommendation is based on a culmination of things. And it's more than just, you know, Planning Commission. It's based off of zoning ordinance, master plan, planning principles, and, you know, and the, uh, and the principles of planning, so.
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, to give you some history on this parcel, because I've lived down the street from here since 1977. At one time, I believe that there were three homes on that parcel, on those parcels. They were all meant to be sold at one time. They were on the market for every bit of 10 years, because they were looking for one person to buy all three parcels. They used to have fruit stands in the front, because they would sell what they grew in their backyard. So, you could stop there and get strawberries, blueberries, whatever. So, um, so that's a little history on the parcel, is what it was before the DMC rehab came in and probably the auto parts store, I believe. But there were a couple of things that were brought up tonight, and one was the, um, spot zoning. And when Mr. McLeod explained it, because, yes, it would look like it doesn't fit in. If you look at the aerial view of that right now, it doesn't fit in. But if you are looking for the future, the parcel that's behind the auto parts, and if you get lucky enough for that shopping center on the corner, keeping our fingers crossed for you, um, we know that this could be the beginning of something else. Okay, so I understand that. Just like looking at your other project that's on Shaner and close to M59, if things are, with that shopping center that's there, eventually, that could turn into another strip of apartments. So, if you are looking at what could happen in the future, it's the same thing. So, this is an introduction, and I would be comfortable if everything that you gave us on this sheet, plus the generous offer to reduce another six units, was in our backup for the next meeting, for the approval. I think that this way, I would be comfortable not going back to the Planning Commission, because everything we would have and need would be in that packet, and it wouldn't just be hearsay. So, I would be more comfortable doing that. So, I would vote yes to introduce this.
So, I, I think what we can do is, we can, we have received a verbal offer from Mr. Gallo to reduce from 88 units to 82 units. We can proceed on the introduction without doing any amendment to the motion right now, with the expectation that the city administration will take, uh, Mr. Gallo's revised offer and incorporate it into the adoption, uh, motion at the next hearing. Is that correct, Mr. Kachubski?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay. Um, is there any, Mrs. Serauski, do you have anything else you want to add?
No. No, I was good the first time.
Okay. I, I do still feel like, a little bit, like this is a compromise in search of a problem. I'm not sure that, um, like, the public is any better off with 82 than 88. But Mr. Gallo offered it, so I'm going to take him at his word that that's what he wants, and, uh...
Kind of. Sort of.
I, I, I mean, I, I, I'm being a little bit facetious with you, Mr. Gallo. I, I, I do, I will say this. I do appreciate your willingness to compromise, your willingness to, to, uh, do what you can to get this project, uh, done, because it, I think it'll be good for the City of Sterling Heights. I'd like to see it at 88. I might have even liked to see it at 92, but, um, this is where we are. So, uh, without any further discussion, I would like Ms. Ryska for a roll call vote. And this is a motion, just to reframe it, this, this is a motion to introduce the map amendment.
Do you want me to read it over?
No, I don't.
Neither do I. Thank you.
Can we have the roll call?
Please, no.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Yenness?
Yes.
Mrs. Ziarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Kosky?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
No.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gallo, Mr. Rogeri. We will see you in, uh, two weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll get those plans in immediately.
Thank you.
We'll work with Chris's team.
She wants the pictures, you know.
We'll give you that. You'll have it.
Drawings immediately.
And I appreciate the fact that he's taking it off the backside of it that's nearest to the neighbor.
Yes, ma'am. We'll do it.
Won't change the parking.
Thank you, guys.
You want the food stands back? The fruit stands.
Bring back the fruit stands.
Okay, we are going to skip the consent agenda, because it's 9:30, and per our council rules, we need to go to communications from citizens. So, uh, we will take communications from citizens now, and then we will go back to the consent agenda once communications from citizens is over. Uh, communications from citizens is the portion of the agenda where you can speak on any item not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to speak under this agenda item? Mr. Nelson. We'll get you next.
Well, I see it's going to be news at 11:00. You should have, uh, taken and, and, uh, recorded that little speech about...
You can speak about any item not on tonight's agenda, Mr. Nelson. Go ahead.
It was not on that agenda. It's not about the agenda, it's about a statement that you made. The statement you made said that, basically, if you want to build apartments in Sterling Heights, we're going to let you do it, because we need the housing units. You have two, uh, PUDs coming up. Uh, I don't know when they're scheduled, and that's a question that I have. But you have Mr. Gallo up again on Irving, Irving Street, uh, development of more apartments. You have the Wedge coming up on Hall Road and Sterrett. And again, both of those were, were passed by the, uh, Planning Commission. They said, oh, what the heck. It's going to go to the City Council anyway. So, that's how, how they got passed, if you watch the, the meeting minutes. People, you, you've got to listen to the people a little bit. That one, that one that's coming up for the Wedge, five-story building backing up to a resident, a, a longtime residential neighborhood, and they're, they're, they're not, they're not even colonial homes. They're all ranch homes. Got to watch what you're doing, you know? But that statement right there, that's going to come back to haunt you. Because basically, if you've got a lot next to you that you want developed, and you want to put a couple of apartments on it, according to Mr. Taylor there, he wants to, he wants that to go through. It's not, we don't have to develop every piece of property that we have in this community. We started as a bedroom community, we should end as a bedroom community. If you have property that is zoned for the master, from the master land use, and you have a need to develop it, then you should be able to develop it. But other than that, leave the development alone. Let everybody breathe. I, I, I just shudder to see what you're going to do with Lakeside. Thank you.
Thank you next, sir. Would you like to speak, sir? Okay, I'll move on. Mr. Orchata?
He's kidding.
Someone come up and speak.
Been here a while. Hi, Council. Wanted to say thank you for, uh, supporting Pride Month. Really appreciate, uh, that acceptance, that representation. It means a lot to our community, and I wanted to thank you for that. Uh, on the subject of housing, again, I support affordable housing, and I don't really care how tall the buildings are. I care about being able to live in the city. Uh, and thank you for taking point on trying to make that possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, sir, in the second row, would you like to speak under communications from citizens?
My name is Larry Meitzner, M-E-I-T-Z-N-E-R. My address is 44496 Sterrett. Problem I have, I talked to Mayor Taylor back on the 18th of November, and he seemed a little surprised with the announcement I had to make to him. He said he'd have somebody contact me. I don't know who he contacted, but I was contacted by Nathan Petrusik from the law firm of O'Reilly. Unfortunately, Mr. Petrusik perjured himself and docu... Don't shake your head, no. Mr. Petrusik perjured himself to advance the city's position. We can discuss this afterwards, if you'd care to. Anyway, I'd like to take a moment to introduce my little diminutive associate, Ms. Teresa Precious. She will be joining me on Thursday down at the federal courthouse, trying to right some of the wrong from Mr. Petrusik. I have copies of the document that he perjured himself with. Pylee versus Kansas, 317 U.S. 213. They are supported by the exhibits referenced to above, and nowhere are they refuted or Originally, we were going to start off with, it's been a while since I've been to one of these shindigs. One of the last times I made a presentation to the council about incompetence, lies, and financial intimidation in the Sterling Heights Police Department. Maybe a little egotistical, but I like to think that that presentation led him to consider employment elsewhere. Unfortunately, incompetence, lies...
Sir, you have...
...and financial intimidation...
Sir, you have one minute remaining. You have one minute remaining.
What?
I just wanted to let you know...
I'm sorry, I can't.
You have one minute remaining. You can start his time.
I didn't realize there was a time limit. Anyway, I see the lies, financial intimidation, incompetence, not with the Sterling Heights Police Department this time, but with the city management. Apparently, the mayor was too intent with his reelection campaign to consider the message I tried to leave with him. I only got...
Okay.
I hate to be cut off, but hey, if, I'm playing by your rules.
Your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Meitzner.
Let's go, Teresa. She'll be with me down in...
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak under communications from citizens? If not, council will close that portion.
Can I get a copy of this?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Meitzner, it's time to return to your seat. You have to return to your seat.
I know you don't like when I have to say, but I'll say it. Have a good one.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, thank you, Council. We will, uh, return to our agenda now. Next item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent
Mr. Kachubski. Diana Bloodsoe from our African-American Coalition was going to be here tonight to speak to this, but she had another obligation and had to leave. So, I told her I would read this for her in her stead. Um, Diana says that, uh, first she would like to thank, uh, City Council for having our, uh, Juneteenth resolution on, uh, the consent, the consent agenda tonight. And she says that, uh, Juneteenth became a federal holiday on June 17th, 2021. And here we are today, preparing to have the City of Sterling Heights first up... to have the City of Sterling Heights first ever Juneteenth celebration. That celebration is scheduled, just so you know, for Friday, June 17, at Dodge Park Farmers Market Pavilion from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. This is monumental, Diana continues to say, and says a lot about the recognition of diversity in this city. She said she would like to thank Mayor Michael C. Taylor, city council, city manager Mark Vanderpool, and myself for recognizing the importance of the holiday and supporting the African American Coalition and making this celebration a reality. In conclusion, she said, I saw a quote from Simon Sinek that she would like to share that is so appropriate for this occasion. And that quote reads, "Words may inspire, but action is what creates change." Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Davis. Anyone else on the consent agenda? If not, council, we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Koski.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider a request by Carpathia Foundation Incorporated for recognition as a local nonprofit organization for the purpose of obtaining, excuse me, a State of Michigan charitable gaming license. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am.
I'm the president of the foundation. And just to clarify, we just wanted to hold a raffle. And according to the Michigan State liquor laws, they asked me to come in front of this honored board and ask for your permission to be a 501(c)(3) in the City of Sterling Heights.
Okay. If we have any questions, we'll call you back up.
Okay.
Okay? All right, no, no problem. You're completely fine. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolve that the request from the Carpathia Foundation, Inc., ask that they be recognized as a local nonprofit organization for the purpose of obtaining a State of Michigan charitable gaming license be considered for approval, provided however, this action is not endorsement of the organization. The City of Sterling Heights should not be listed on any promotional materials associated with charitable gaming activities.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Radke?
Yes, briefly. Mr. Mayor, this is a great organization. I've been to many an Oktoberfest at the Carpathia Club. Like all local ethnic heritage groups, I belong to the Polish Century Club myself. It can be harder and harder these days with membership and with the pandemic closing their doors. So, anything we can do to help you increase membership and stay a wonderful organization or community, I'd like to extend our hand for that. So, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, anyone else? Yeah, thank you again for the presentation and sorry you had to sit through all this to get to it. But I think it'll be well worth it.
Of the government.
So, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Congratulations and good luck. Thank you. Next item is to consider nominations to the City of Sterling Heights Planning Commission. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, this is a mayoral appointment to three positions seeking reappointment to terms ending June 30, 2025. With a two-step process, I would request that the three applicants seeking reappointment, Paul Jaboro, Gerald Rowe, and Pam Preet Sarau be nominated for reappointment. Is there anyone who'd like to make that?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
I can just nominate them all three at once, correct?
Correct.
All right, very good. Resolve to nominate Paul Jaboro, Gerald Rowe, and Pam Preet Sarau for consideration and appointment to the Planning Commission at the June 21, 2022 regular city council meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Nope, they've all done a wonderful job. I know them all and I'm very happy to reappoint them or re-nominate them.
Counsel, anyone else? If not, thank you, Mrs. Sarowski and council. No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion, or aye, I meant. We got, motion carries, 7-0. Thank you. We do have, I'm sorry, we need to go on to the next agenda item. So, the next agenda item is to consider appointments to City of Sterling Heights boards and commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 boards and commissions. These are all city council appointments. They are all to, I'm sorry, they have different term endings, but the first one we'll take is the Board of Ordinance Appeals 1. There are four nominations that are all city council appointments to terms ending June 30, 2025. Is there anyone on the city council who would like to make those appointments?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolve to appoint James Mandel, Kathleen Martin, Justin Smith, and Michael Stickney to the Board of Ordinance Appeals 1 to a term ending June 30, 2025, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Nope.
With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the Board of Ordinance Appeals 2. There are two nominations seeking appointment here, both to terms ending June 30, 2025. Is there anyone who'd like to make those appointments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolve to appoint Ben Ancona and Lauren Tackett to the Board of Ordinance Appeals 2 to a term ending June 30, 2025, subject to appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Let me get back to it. Next is the Board of Review. Two positions, two positions for appointment to both the terms ending June 30, 2025. Is there anyone on council who'd like to make those appointments?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolve to appoint Kimberly Legarsky and Mark Magny to the Board of Review to a term ending June 30, 2025, subject to the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the General Employees Retirement System Board. There is one member who has been nominated seeking appointment to a term ending June 30, 2025. Do I have a motion for appointment?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to appoint Richard Wheeler to the General Employees Retirement System Board to a term ending June 30, 2025, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the Police and Fire Pension Board. Two appointments to terms ending June 30, 2026. Is there anyone who'd like to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yenness.
Resolve to appoint John Lamorato and Robert Melisick to the Police and Fire Pension Board to a term ending June 30, 2026, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Nope.
With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the Zoning Board of Appeals. There are three nominations to terms ending June 30, 2025. Is there anyone who'd like to make the appointments?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolve to appoint John Fenn, David Graff, and Stephanie Jackson to the Zoning Board of Appeals to a term ending June 30, 2025, subject to the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subset 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
No, mayor.
I will just state for the record that I believe Stephanie Jackson will do a great job on the Zoning Board of Appeals, but I would have voted for Erica Stiglia for the reasons I stated on the record last time. I thank Eric for his service on the Zoning Board of Appeals. I wish him luck in the future. Not too much luck in the terms of the employment he's taking, and I think he knows what I mean by that, but I wish him well and thank him for his service on the Zoning Board of Appeals. I hope he will continue to serve as a volunteer in Sterling Heights. He's done a good job and in my personal opinion, he deserved better than this.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Just as a point of clarification, Mr. Castiglia is a member of our-
Citizens Advisory-
Citizens Advisory Board. So, that's a very important board and I appreciate all of his hard work as well. But I, we've been looking for a lot of new volunteers to come forward. He's served on two important boards, so I think he's going to serve us, continue hopefully to serve us very well on that other board.
I hope so, too. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Just very briefly, I also want to add that adding Stephanie Jackson to the ZBA brings two female members, full-time members of the ZBA. Right now, we only have one. Now, we had our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Report that came back some time ago saying that while women are a majority of our city, they're not a majority of our city leadership or our boards. So, I think that's a nice addition. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Those are the two-step boards and commissions. We will now move on to the one-steps. We will start with the Corridor Improvement Authority. This is a mayoral appointment to a term ending June 30, 2025. I'm asking that Michael DiAgostini be reappointed to the Corridor Improvement Authority. Is there a council member who'll make that motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolve to appoint Michael DiAgostini to the Corridor Improvement Authority to a term ending June 30, 2025, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Thank you, council. With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the Economic Development Corporation Brownfield Authority. This is a mayoral appointment. There are two open positions, members seeking reappointment, both terms ending June 30, 2025. I would appreciate if a council member could make the motion for appointment of David Griffith and Benjamin McMartin.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
On the advice of the mayor, let me just find my place, resolve to appoint David Griffith and Benjamin McMartin to the Economic Development Corporation Brownfield Authority to a term ending June 30, 2025, subject to appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Elected Officials Compensation Commission is up next. There are four appointments that need to be made. I'd like to start with the term ending June 30, 2029. This is a mayoral appointment and I'm asking that Lori Doty be appointed to the Elected Officials Compensation Commission to the term ending June 30, 2029. Is there somebody who would make that motion for me?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yenness.
Resolve to appoint Lori Doty to the Elected Officials Compensation Commission to a term ending June 30, 2025, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office in two weeks.
Just for clarification, I was asking her to be appointed to the June 30, 2029? It sounded like you said 2025?
I did. I'm sorry. My apologies.
2029?
2029. So, you amend, do you amend your motion to 2029?
I amended my motion to 2029.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, briefly.
Mr. Radke.
Mrs. Doty's been on this board for quite some time. I think she's in line to be the chairperson. I think she'd be an excellent appointee. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not sure who's left on the board at this-
I think they nominated her to be the chair last time.
Yeah, with three other openings. It's a five-member board. I think we, I think she's got a very good chance at obtaining that. Okay, what I'd like to do on the three open positions-
You get to vote on it, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. You got me sidetracked. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Radke. For the three open positions, can I postpone those to a date certain all at the same time? Or, okay. So, I would entertain a motion to postpone, I would entertain a motion to postpone the three open positions on the Elected Officials Compensation Commission to terms ending June 30, 2025, June 30, 2027, and June 30, 2028 to the October 4, 2022 city council meeting.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported with no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is the Ethnic Community Committee. There are four positions seeking reappointment. These are mayoral appointments to terms ending on different dates. There are 1, 2, 3, 3, nope, they're all June 30, 2025, sorry. Is there anyone on council who would make the motion to reappoint Kalici Anyogay? I'm sorry for mispronouncing that. Nikita Jones, Vipul Kumar, Tripathy, and Carmen Williams.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolve to appoint, I'm going to slaughter these names, so forgive me, I lost my place. Kalici Anyongu, Nikita Jones, Vipul Kumar, Tripathy, and Carmen Williams to the Ethnic Community Committee to a term ending June 30, 2025, subject to the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Radke.
Very briefly, all of these members have done a great job and they deserve reappointment. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is the Local Development Finance Authority. This is an open seat, mayoral appointment to a term ending June 30, 2026. Based on discussions and recommendation from city administration, I'd like council to appoint Josephine Atisha to the Local Development Finance Authority. Is there anyone who would make that motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
On the recommendation of the mayor, resolve to appoint Josephine Atisha to the Local Development Finance Authority to a term ending June 30, 2026, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Thank you, council. With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is the Arts Commission. There are four seats. Three of them are members seeking reappointment and there is one open seat to a partial term ending June 30, 2025. Why don't we take the three that are full seats, are full terms to ending June 30, 2026? Those would be Gary Lusk, Wendy Popko, and Jeannie Shabath Lewis. Is there anyone on council who'd like to make a motion to appoint those three?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Move to appoint Gary Lusk, Wendy Popko, and Jeannie Shabath Lewis. Let me get to the arts. Okay, well, I've got you.
1016.
I'm getting there. 1016. Here we go. I got Citizens Advisory, Community Alliance, Historical. Beautiful, I got it. To the Arts Commission, to a term ending June 30, 2026, subject to the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subset 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
No, they do a great job.
With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have the one open seat on the Arts Commission. Is there anyone on the council who'd like to make an appointment?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolve to appoint Zachary Overman to the Arts Commission to a term ending June 30, 2025, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03, taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Radke?
Yes, briefly. He was recommended by the liaison to the Arts Commission. He has done public art and he's involved in STEAM. He's a young guy. I think he'll be a great addition to our Arts Commission.
Okay, thank you, council. Anyone else? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the Beautification Commission. There are four members seeking reappointment, all to terms ending June 30, 2025. This is a council appointment. Counsel, is there anyone who'd like to make these reappointments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolve to appoint Linda Maida, Manny Gonzalez, Nancy Kajek, and Lisa Lane to the Beautification Commission to terms ending June 30, 2025, subject to the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Mr. Radke.
Just briefly, they're all on the commission now. They've all been very helpful in the past. They'll do a great job.
Okay, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is the Board of Code Appeals. Laurel Johnson is seeking reappointment. This is a council appointment to a term ending June 30, 2027. Is there anyone who'd like to make this appointment?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to appoint Laurel Johnson to the Board of Code Appeals to a term ending June 30, 2027, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is the- Next up is the Citizens Advisory Committee, CDBG. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven positions up for reappointment, all to terms ending June 30th, 2023. Is there anyone on council who'd like to make those appointments?
All right, Mayor Taylor, I'll take a stab at it.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolved to appoint Janet Bartelo, Cosetta Elzany, Sheri Marwidi, Benjamin Orchata, Grace Pedri, and Jeannie Shabath Lewis, and Sean Taylor. Let's go to the, to the Citizens Advisory Committee, CDBG, to a term ending June 30th, 2023, subject to the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subset 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
No, I am happy to appoint all of them.
With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the Community Alliance. There are two appointments, one member seeking reappointment and one open seat, both to terms ending June 30th, 2025. Counsel, is there anyone who'd like to make one or two appointments to the Community Alliance?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolved to appoint Ricardo Harris and Tetrika Grapeenreid to the Community Alliance to a term ending June 30th, 2025, so that the appointees meet the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Radke?
Briefly. Mr. Harris has done a great job on the commission, and Tetrika was recommended to us. She has a religious studies background. I think she'll make a great addition to the Community Alliance.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Radke. Anyone else? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the Historical Commission. There are two appointments to be made, one member seeking reappointment, and there is one open seat. This is a council appointment to a term ending June 30th, 2025. Is there anyone on council who'd like to make one or two appointments to the Historical Commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolved to appoint Ryan Wajakowski and Stanley Ortwine to, lost my place, to the Historical Commission to terms ending June 30th, 2025, so that the appointees meet the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Briefly, they were, Stanley was recommended by the liaison to the Historical Commission. He already volunteered for several other local museums. Will be a great addition, and our Historical Commission's been doing great things, so they deserve to keep going.
Okay. Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the Housing Commission. This is a reappointment requested. Counsel has the power of appointment, term ending 12/31/2025. Is there anyone on council that would like to make this appointment?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Okay, I've got to go to two places on this. I'll just, I know it's Pamela Terry. Okay.
It's getting warm in here, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
I'm getting there. We are, okay, resolved to appoint Pam, Pamela Terry to the Housing Commission to an amended term ending December 31st, 2025?
Correct.
Support.
Sounded like a question.
I want to make sure I'm in the right place.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
No.
With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Library Board of Trustees. This is a council appointment to a term ending June 30th, 2025. There are two members of the board seeking reappointment, Terry Hojenaki and Stacy Ziarco. Is there anyone who'd like to make those motions?
Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. Resolved to appoint Terry Hojenaki and Stacy Ziarco to the Library Commission to a term ending June 30th, 2025, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Just as a matter of clarification, Mrs. Schmidt, this is for the Library Board of Trustees, correct?
Yes. Library Commission. Otherwise, AKA.
It's been a long night.
It's too many pages to flip through. Sorry.
Okay, so that is sufficient clarification. That's the Library Board of Trustees. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
No.
With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Couple more left. We have the Solid Waste Management Commission. Two appointments by council, members seeking reappointment, Henry Smith and Donald McCoy, terms ending June 30th, 2025. Counsel, is there anyone who'd like to make this appointment?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanez.
Resolved to appoint Henry Smith and Donald McCoy to the Solid Waste Management Commission to a term ending June 30th, 2025, subject to the appointee meeting, the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Sustainability Commission. This is a council appointment to terms ending June 30th, 2025. There's one member seeking reappointment and one open seat. Counsel, is there anyone that would like to make one or both of these appointments?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Who's asking to be reappointed?
Michael Tabert.
Michael?
Michael, Michael.
Taggart?
Tabert.
Tabert with a B, E-A-B-B-E-R-T.
Okay. Resolved to appoint Michael Tabert to the Solid Waste Management Commission to a term ending.
No, Sustainability Commission.
Sustainability, sorry. Resolved to appoint, did I change his name again? Is it Michael?
Michael Tabert.
Michael Tabert. Okay. To the Sustainability Commission to a term ending June 30th, 2025, subject to the appointee meeting the qualification, qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Did you make one or two appointments?
Just one, because I don't have a list, I, I don't have a nomination for the.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to make, um, let me see.
Nomination.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a nomination? And we, we don't need a nomination. We can have an appointment to the Sustainability Commission to the open term.
Mayor, Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
I've got to get to the verbiage. Resolved to appoint Kelly Skilin to the Sustainability Commission to a term ending June 30th, 2025?
Yes.
Subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
She doesn't know.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Okay. No.
Okay.
We just have to tell her.
Neither. I think she knows.
Oh, by the way.
Okay. Okay. With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kelly, I'm sure you're watching out there. You're on the Sustainability.
She's out of town right now.
You can watch online.
Some Pittsburgh.
You got internet in Pittsburgh.
That's right.
All right. Next up is the Water System Advisory Council.
I know. So she's, I'm sure she's watching.
This is an open appointment by city council to a partial term ending 12/31/2022.
Mr. Mayor.
It's a lot, it's a lot of work for a six-month appointment. Anybody have an appointment?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
I'm just trying to find the, um, resolved to appoint Debbie Tao to the Water System Advisory Council to a term ending December 31st, 2022, so that the appointee meet the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the Youth Advisory Board. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine positions that are seeking reappointment, and we have four openings, as we have right-sized this board to a total of 13 members. Let's start with the nine who are seeking reappointment. All good kids. Anyone want to make those, that motion for those nine?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Okay, I'll do the, I'll do the reappointments. Resolved to appoint Ayana Amir, Amanda Amir, Maria Bougnar, Cassidy Conley, Dayuti Data, Andre Conya, Ashley Popko, Max Stefanski, and Zion Williams. Let me get to the verbiage. To the Youth Advisory Board to a term ending June 30th, 2023, subject to the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subset 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Nope.
No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have four openings on the Youth Advisory Board. I'd entertain a motion to postpone consideration of those four openings to the September 6th, 2022 City Council Meeting.
Been moved.
It's been moved and supported. No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to reports from city administration. Anything tonight? Mr. Vanderpool.
Nothing further, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Kachubski, the two items. Anything else?
Nothing else. Two items.
Two items for closed session tonight. Thank you. Reports from city council on new business. Anybody have anything for tonight?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanez.
Mr. Mayor, we got a request from Willie DeShavez, who sits on our ethnic advisory board. They would like to, on June 10th, come to City Hall, raise the Filipino flag, and take some photographs. They said they'll be about five minutes long. He says he can provide his own flagpole if we're not, if we don't allow him to use our flagpole. I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we allow the Filipino community to use our flagpole that, either one that, other than the American flagpole, to take these photographs. And apparently, they're doing this in Warren, and then they're coming here and taking photographs.
Filipino Independence Day.
Filipino Independence Day. Thank you.
He wants to put the flag up, take pictures, and then take it down?
It'll be about five minutes.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Attorney, as Henry has called you before today.
Yeah.
Any issues with that?
Let me get Mr. DJF his on the line. Hold on a second. So, just to be clear, our flagpoles are not used by the public in general. Our flagpoles are only used for what the city has decided to support in speech. So if the city is deciding to put up a flag for an hour, that's the city's decision to make through council. If it's, but it isn't them using our flagpole. It can't be. So.
This is why I'm making a motion.
So I would remake the motion to support Filipino Independence Day. We'll let the Filipino flag fly at City Hall on the day. The, it was June 10th, you said?
June 10th, yes, sir.
That's the motion.
I'll amend my motion to that.
And moved. Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? No discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I could have done that with no objection, but.
Yeah, same diff.